All right, I'm calling Fall's Special Town Meeting to order. And you may have all noticed that we have a new face up here. And that is Lisa O'Leary, who's going to be managing some of the visuals that you see up on the screen and helping keep us in order up here as well. That also means that sadly, it also marks the first time since I've been standing up here that John Chancherulo is not sitting with us. John had over 20 years in public service, but he has left town government for his new chapter, which is starting as Executive Director of Temple Beth Shalom in Needham. John was instrumental in bringing a lot of very positive change to town, one that all of us felt was he championed the electronic voting initiative and all the work that was done around that. So we have a big, big degree of thanks to John. The other thing is that anyone who knows John knows that he lives by the personal philosophy to put a meaningful dent in the universe. And John has certainly done that. So even though he will no longer, he's no longer an employee of the town, he still lives in the town, so we're hoping that he joins us here as a town meeting member in the future. So I've asked John to honor us and for us to honor him by leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So John, if you would come up. And John, town meeting members, if you will rise and remain standing for a moment of silent reflection and prayer immediately following the pledge. John?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, John. One time, I'm hoping I never have to make this announcement, I'm always hoping I never have to make this announcement, but sadly, we have a couple of empty seats at this session for members and former members we've lost since we last met. We've lost Joe Di Maria, who was not only a longtime town meeting member, I remember sitting right across the aisle from him when I was in the seats there, but he was also a longtime Conservation Commission member and was Chair at one point. And we also lost Gordon Smith, who not only was he a town meeting member for 51 years, he was also an original member of the Cable Commission. May their memories be a blessing to us all. Tonight, we are very, and just in time, literally flying in from Washington, we have Representative Lynch here. It has been an exciting couple of days for him, and we're very happy that you're, I'm assuming you flew, that you were able to make it here. He has, obviously, has a lot to report, having just come from our nation's capital. And he was so kind to come to address us before we started our business tonight. Representative Lynch.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Moderator. I appreciate the courtesy. I know you've got a lot on the warrant, so I'll be very brief. As you know, the shutdown of the federal government is over. It ended last night. But matter of full disclosure, I voted against that agreement. Principally, the difficulty and the disagreement was over health care. Couple of things. One, the agreement that passed last night maintains the trillion-dollar cut in Medicaid over the next 10 years. So when we think of that as residents of Norwood trying to reopen Norwood Hospital, that won't make it easier, let's put it that way. All of our hospitals in this region rely on, our hospitals, health care centers and, you know, community health care centers and nursing homes rely for about 30% of their funding on Medicaid. So when you see that funding's going to be cut by a trillion dollars, it puts us at risk. And especially in this area where the collapse, the bankruptcy of Stuart Health Care, we had eight hospitals go bankrupt, and I know the governor tried to patch a few of them together, but they're still in very vulnerable financial shape right now. So it just makes it that much more difficult. And what that means is that Norwood Fire, EMS needs to shuttle people into Boston if there's an emergency. Not only that, but every single one of our hospitals in our region is oversubscribed. So they're over capacity. So for instance, Monday morning, and we keep track of this, Monday morning, every bed in Mass General was full, and they had every bed in their emergency room full, and they had 100 people in the corridor. That's a record number of what they call "boardings." A boarding is when you need to be admitted to a hospital and there's no bed for you. That's happening in every single one of our hospitals, which is another reason why we got to get Norwood opened up again. That'll, that'll take some of the pressure off. But that bill, like I say, would make it very, very difficult for us to do so. We're working on it, though. And there'll be, I think there'll be good news in the future, but we got a lot of work to do on that. So there's also a problem with the health care subsidies that go to about 24 million people across the country, a lot of low-income and middle-income families. Those subsidies were also eliminated. So if a person was spending, you know, if a husband or wife with a couple of kids were spending $1,300 a month on their insurance under the Affordable Care Act, that goes up to $2,600 or $3,000 a month. So we're going to have about 24 million people in the country that won't have health care once those things expire. We've got a couple of efforts that we're trying to put up there. We've got some Democrats and Republicans side by side trying to restore that, but it'll be a fight. So we've got that to look forward to. On the Norwood Hospital situation, so with myself, Senator Mike Rush, your Representative John Rogers, we've been meeting regularly with state officials, the governor, we've gone up to see the governor a couple of times. We've met with the Secretary, the State Secretary of HHS, and we have a new one who's just transitioning in. We met with him last week. I know that the governor's task force on Norwood Hospital is also meeting regularly. Tony Mazuko and others are meeting on that. So we have more work to do, but we're optimistic, let's put it that way. But there's a lot of work that has to be done. You know, in closing, I just want to say that Norwood has a long and proud tradition of patriotic service to our country. One of the greatest things I get to do is to appoint young people to our military academies. And Norwood has traditionally overperformed in that regard. So I recently had the opportunity to nominate Alexander Dunston to the United States Naval Academy. He's a young Norwood High graduate, and you should be proud of that fact. And he follows in the steps of a bunch of other Norwood kids who have made the same decision. Isabella Aspen-Wall, she was also Naval Academy, Norwood High. John Brooks, West Point, Dexter Southfield School. Joe Ayadaneesi, Zavarian Brothers, these are all Norwood kids. Joe Gallo, Norwood High School. Joe Carroll, Norwood High School. Trevor Kenny, Norwood High School. Dan Henry, the first kid I ever appointed, I met him, he was a catcher at the Norwood Dedham baseball game. He was catching for Norwood High, and he was the, he did a couple of tours in Iraq, God bless him. But all those young people, you can be enormously proud of. We also, I've had a chance to deal with the Peace Corps. Just met a bunch of kids over in Tanzania, working for the Peace Corps from the United States. So I have a deep respect for them as well. And I just want to recognize Liam Patrick Macalay, who recently finished up his two-year service assignment in Rwanda. And these kids are a shining example of what's great about Norwood, and they represent you exceedingly well. You should be very, very proud of them. Norwood's itself is a shining example of what's best about America. You take care of your kids, you take care of seniors, and you're very, very respectful to your veterans as well. So it's an honor for me to represent you every day in Congress. I want to give a special shout out to Helen Abdallah Donahue. I know she's recovering from a little bit of health difficulty, but she's a truper, and she's in my prayers. Thank you all, it's an honor to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. All right. I'm going to say this one last time in the back, if you're a town meeting member, please move to the first three rows if you're going to sit in the back. There's plenty of space, but I need you to be in the first three rows in order for me to recognize you, in order to make sure that your vote is tallied as well with the clicker. So come on down and fill some seats, but first three rows if you're a town meeting member. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, one quick announcement on the Rules Committee. We do have an opening due to a resignation for District Eight, so if you are a District Eight town meeting member who wants to be on the Rules Committee, please get in touch with me via email. We are utilizing electronic voting once again, and it is that time where we're going to test. But in a second, before we do that, I just want to remind everyone, we'll have a standard time limit, and I'll give you a warning about 10 seconds before we're going to close the voting. Each member is assigned an individual device. They will be collected as you leave the auditorium. If you leave the auditorium to go to the bathroom, or get a drink of water, or whatever, take your clicker with you, take your electronic device with you, and leave it with one of the clerk's office team members at the table. Do not leave it with your neighbor. Do not give it to your seatmate to vote for you. If you do leave the auditorium, you will be greeted by a member of the clerk's office who will ask you for your clicker. So, and they are very much on top of it. The last vote that you make is the vote that counts. So if you vote yes, and then you change your mind before we close the voting, and vote no, the no will be the vote that's going to count. I've also been asked to make, just to clarify abstentions. The way an abstention works is you are counted for the quorum if you abstain, but your vote does not count. So in other words, it isn't a yes or a no, and it isn't counted in the quantum of the vote. An abstain is literally present, and that's about it. So please remember, this is a representative town meeting, you are representing your whole district, so please be mindful about representing your district by actually casting your vote. The other thing is clickers will be collected at the end of the night, so don't try to take them home. Thus far, we have not had anyone who's had to had retired police chief Brooks go to their home to collect their clicker. So thank you again in advance for that. And then your vote, we're going to test the clickers in a second, your vote should be appearing up there, up on the screen. You're assigned a number. And Sean, did we put, we put the question up already?
Yes.
It's up there. So go ahead and test your clicker, you should see that it's working if the number's filled in. The other thing is you can see, and I know the lighting is not great, you can see a little okay on the device as well. All right, I'm going to close the vote. Vote is now closed. Yeah, I want the total, but this isn't on either. Okay. So it looks like we have 127 yes, 19 no, and 12 abstentions. And I don't know, NCM, on the monitor here, I'm not seeing anything. So Brian, if you're hearing me, I can't see anything on the monitor. Quickly through just some of our rules, the moderator's addressed as Madam Moderator. All questions go through the moderator. When called on to speak, state your name and district. If you're not a town meeting member, your name and address. And if you're spokesman for a group, please identify yourself as such. We're going to do something a little bit different tonight. We have microphones set up, two microphones set up in the back, one right behind Ms. Doyle over here, one behind Mr. Howard over in the back of the auditorium there. We have the front microphone here and another front microphone by Attorney DeLuca over there. I'm going to ask, certainly when we have registered speakers, I will call the next speaker to stand up to the mic. I'm going to ask you to go to the nearest mic, if you are able. If you are not able, we will get a microphone to you, so don't worry about that. But if you are able to get to a microphone, and even if you want to raise your hand to speak, you can just go to a microphone and raise your hand, and I will recognize you. I think that will help town meeting move a little bit quicker, a little bit more efficiently, and certainly allow our runner to actually participate as a town meeting member as well, which we'd like him to do. All right. Sponsors and proponents of an article have 10 minutes. If the group is represented, in this case, we don't have any group that's registered to speak. Subsequent speakers are given five minutes. So if you are a town meeting member who is speaking, you have five minutes. In all cases, speakers can be granted a one-time extension by the body, by the vote of the body. There is no limit on debate, folks. So I know that folks sometimes feel that somebody moves the question and it cuts off debate. You control that. Moving the question requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of the body has to approve it. So if you still feel that you have something to say, or there are other speakers that have things to say, you vote down the question, and we'll continue with debate. Only town meeting members can make motions and vote, and only motions can be made for business published in the warrant within the scope of the article. And if you're registered to speak, I'm going to call on you in the order that you registered. So again, we've got a couple of articles that have a lot of registered speakers. I will actually call two speakers at a time, so the next person up will be standing at a microphone, ready to speak. The meeting is broadcast live and also streamed live by NCM right now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, NCM. And while I mention that the meeting is being broadcast and streamed live, I want to remind the body about the fact that town meeting enables us to have a full and open discussion on warrant articles. We ask that everybody respects one another and treats everybody with dignity and not contempt, because everyone has a right to speak, even if you agree with them or not. So I ask for your support of that. And with that, also a reminder that the tables in the back, as you came in, not only have updated information for town meeting, but also some community information out there. So I'm going to declare Special Town Meeting in session, and I know that the FinCom has a brief presentation that's elaborating on the pink sheet and other financial info to aid you in your deliberations. So Chairman Sullivan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. As the Finance Commission prepared its recommendations to the town meeting body for this special town meeting, we kept in mind many things. First and foremost, that we represent you, and that ultimately, it is the town meeting body that makes the decisions. We work to ensure that we have the information to make the best fiscal decision at the time. We ask questions that we would expect to be asked by town meeting members, which is not surprising, as each of us are and continue, are town meeting members. Next slide, please. When reviewing the requests for this special town meeting, the Finance Commission kept these three topics in the forefront of our minds. Free cash is at a historically high amount of $24.9 million. We need to carefully evaluate how to spend that. Our structural deficit pressures continue. We used $7.5 million of free cash to balance the fiscal year '26 budget. Our expenses are outpacing our revenues. While the town and schools have been working diligently to control spending, there are several external and non-discretionary cost drivers increasing faster than our limited growth, revenue growth under Proposition 2.5. These cost drivers include health insurance, pensions, utilities, and labor costs, which rise 4% to 10% per year. This aligns with a recently studied published, study published by the Massachusetts Municipal Association, MMA. It was titled "A Perfect Storm: Cities and Towns Face Historic Fiscal Pressures." It acknowledges the increasing pressure on cities and towns throughout Massachusetts to fund essential public services. A copy of this was available at the front this evening, and it is also in the Town Meeting Document folder on the website. In addition to this, there are substantial capital outlay needs ahead. Our buildings are aging, needing repair. Our vehicles need to be replaced on a consistent basis. Roads and sidewalks need to be maintained. None of it gets less expensive. All of these need to be considered as we review these special town meeting requests and decide how best to spend the unprecedented amount of free cash that currently exists. What do we need to use now? What do we need to save for future? And what are, we need to anticipate emergencies, sorry. Next slide, please. Let's talk about free cash. We all understand that at this time, the town of Norwood has an unprecedented amount of free cash. Generating this type of free cash is not sustainable. Free cash typically has three sources. Unspent free cash from the previous year, lower expenses than forecasted in the budget, and revenues greater than forecasted in the budget. As you can see, all three of these sources were favorable to our town last year. We had $13.3 million left over from fiscal year '25. Our expenditures were $3.7 million less than budget, and our revenues were $7.9 million greater than budget. The majority of these excess revenues is related to investment income. At the start of the Coakley Project, the town made the decision to borrow for the majority of the project. These monies earned significant investment income due to the higher interest rate and holding a larger balance in the bank. That balance has now been depleted as the project is nearly complete, and a majority of those monies have been expended. It is expected that investment income will return to more moderate levels. In addition to the investment income, building permits exceeded budget due to the FM Global Construction Project and other expansion projects. Major projects such as these are not foreseen in the near future. Finally, motor vehicle excise taxes exceeded budget. This is cyclical and can vary widely based on the economy. Once again, this is a historically high figure. It would be irresponsible to expect this to continue and to make financial decisions expecting such a figure. Our balance has decreased by $5 million in the past year. The Finance Commission, as with Representative Town Meeting, believes this should be spent carefully and strategically moving forward. Next slide, please. This chart illustrates the significant change in free cash in the last two years. It is important to note that the fiscal year '25 free cash number included $4.3 million in leftover from 2024, and that, as I mentioned before, fiscal year '26 had $13.3 million left over from 2025. If you were to remove the leftover amount of free cash from fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26, you will see, next slide, please. You will see that the fiscal year '26 free cash is less than half of the free cash from fiscal year '25. This aligns with the lower investment income generated and the decrease in building permits. Investment income in fiscal year '24 was 7.6; in fiscal year '25, it was 6.9. Building permits in fiscal year '24 were $13.4 million, and in fiscal year '25, they were $2.8 million. Next slide, please. While we talk about free cash, we need to keep in mind our town's free cash policy as it was approved in January of 2020. We should avoid using free cash for operating expenses, except in extraordinary circumstances. As I've mentioned, we are using free cash to balance our operating budget. If free cash exceeds $5 million, the excess should be transferred to a stabilization fund. We are not currently following this policy. Our free cash is far in excess of $5 million. The Finance Commission recognizes that, given our known structural deficit, putting all of this into reserves is not practical, but it is important to consider shoring up some stabilization and reserve accounts at this time. Free cash should be used for one-time expenses. Next slide, please. Now let's talk about the structural deficit. A structural deficit occurs when the town's recurring expenses, property taxes, local receipts, and state aid grow more slowly than recurring expenses such as salaries, benefits, utilities, and contractual obligations. This is happening in Norwood. Our revenue growth is limited. Proposition 2.5, as we all know, caps annual property tax growth at 2.5%, while many major costs, health insurance, pensions, utilities, and labor costs rise 4% to 10%. State aid is flat and unpredictable. It is not keeping pace with inflation or rising service demands. As I mentioned before, this is not unique to Norwood. Cities and towns across the state are facing higher costs for all of this. We are relying on the use of one-time funds to maintain level services without cuts. Once this, once these one-time funds are gone, we are creating a gap, and we know our free cash is declining. Next slide, please. Now we need to discuss future capital expenditures. Capital spending is an important consideration. As much as we would like to put it off, it is not responsible planning to neglect our infrastructure. The town manager and his team have spent quite a bit of time over the last few years identifying the true capital equipment needs of our town. It is our responsibility to maintain our infrastructure, but that can often have a hefty price tag. The fact is, our buildings are aging. They need roofs. They need electrical system upgrades. Town hall and the library are beautiful buildings, but their upkeep is expensive. Our fleet of vehicles and our public safety departments in our schools need to be replaced on a consistent basis, and those price tags are not coming down. Our roads, our sidewalks, and our parking lots need attention so that we can all safely drive and walk throughout town. These expenses are often one large, one-time large expenditures, a good use of free cash, but also a good place to borrow if it is going to be used over a long period of time. The key to borrowing is to keep in mind that the debt service on money borrowed impacts the operating budget, and the goal is to keep that amount stable over time. That requires us to borrow only as much as the amount that comes off in any given year. Next slide, please. At this town meeting, the Finance Commission is supporting two articles. At this town meeting, the Finance Commission is supporting two articles that would take about 10% of the unprecedented amount of free cash and put it aside as a rainy day fund. In times of need, when we may have less cash, cash or an emergency, stabilization and reserve accounts allow the town to access funds without impacting the operating budget. FinCom recommends placing $2 million into a capital stabilization account. This would put aside money for capital expenditures if the spending request called for in the capital plan could not be met due to insufficient available free cash, a need to minimize borrowing, higher-than-normal capital expenditures, or an unusual, unusual emergency or extraordinary circumstances. To utilize funds in this account, a 2/3 vote of town meeting would be required, and the FinCom is recommending a policy that would include a plan to pay the fund back before withdrawing. The policy has not been finalized, but members of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Commission are in the midst of reviewing it. In addition to the capital stabilization account, FinCom recommends supporting the request of the school committee, school committee, to fund the Special Education Reserve Account to the maximum, maximum allowable balance of 2% of net school spending. This, in our opinion, is a responsible use of one-time funds. It ensures that if the school department faced unexpected special education expenses, they would have the funds available to cover those expenses without impacting the operating budget. This will only be used in the case of an unexpected special education expense, not as part of normal, of the normal operating budget. When considering funding these accounts, the Finance Commission considered the amount of free cash available, the amount we use to balance the operating budget in fiscal year '26, the amount needed for the capital plan, and how much we may need to balance the FY '27 operating budget. This decision was made carefully, considering our free cash balance, our structural deficit, and our infrastructure needs. We will discuss the Finance Commission's recommendations for Articles 7, 8, and 9 as they come before town meeting floor, as the funding source, funding source recommendations have changed since the pink sheets were mailed to you last week. Next slide. This page offers a visual representation of what, how we will be using free cash tonight. The orange slice represents the 20% of free cash that we would use for capital improvements. The purple slice represents the 8% of free cash that we would use for capital stabilization. The royal blue slice recommends, is 4% of free cash that would be used for the acquisition of 820 Naponset Street. The yellow slice represents 2.3% of free cash, which would be used to fund the Special Education Reserve. The red slice recommends the 3% of free cash that we would be, that we will be using to put to OPEB or other post-employment benefits, following our town financial policy of transferring unexpended health insurance funds from the health insurance budget line to the trust fund. The blue slice represents the 1.6% of free cash that we will be using to shore up our worker, worker compensation fund based on our auditor's recommendation. And the green slice recommends the 60, almost 61% of free cash that will be left after our, our recommendations this evening. Next slide, please. Looking forward, the Finance Commission, oh, sorry, wrong page. As we move forward to review the request for free cash and borrowing tonight, I want to review a few key points. As I've said before, the fiscal year '26 budget was balanced by using $7.5 million of free cash. We expect to use greater than $10 million to balance a level services budget in fiscal year '27, and we do not yet have a clear picture of what fiscal year '28 will look like, but it is reasonable to expect that we will need more than the previous year to balance a level services budget. Next slide, please. Our key financial challenges. The town has been fortunate to have this influx of free cash over the past two years. We do not expect it to continue. It is declining. Our increase in expenses continues to outpace our increase in revenues. As mentioned previously, this is not unique to Norwood. Next slide, please. Looking forward, the Finance Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and the school, the school committee, town and school administrators, need to develop a solid plan for using our historically high balance of free cash and tackling our structural deficit. That work has started, but we need to accelerate. What are the realistic revenue projections over the next five years? What do our operating expenses look like if nothing changes? If we have positions we have to add? If we have to cut, what can we cut? What are the major capital needs over the next five to 10 years? What other needs do we have to main, what other needs do we have to maintain our current infrastructure? Can we balance investment to maintain stable debt service? And what rainy day funds should we fund in anticipation of unforeseen financial challenges or emergencies? Next slide, please. Thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate your attention, and we look forward to hearing the discussion on the articles to come.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. All right. That takes us to the start of our articles. And as you saw in the letter from the town manager and myself on October 27th of this year, we are proposing three articles for a consent agenda. The way the consent agenda works is I will call off each of these three articles. If three town meeting members stand up and yell "Hold," the article will be removed from the consent agenda and will go in the regular order after the consent agenda. If any articles remain in the consent agenda, there will be two motions. One, to include them in the consent agenda, and the second, to approve the consent or to vote on the consent agenda. So it, you're, you're controlling this process. The reason we're doing this, as we said in the letter, is this is a part of our bylaws that was voted by town meeting as a way to spend more time on the larger, more significant articles and to move quicker through some of the more required matters or those that are administrative in nature. So I'm going to start off by calling out Article 1, $400,000 from free cash to the Workman's Compensation Insurance Fund. Article 2, $749,855 from free cash to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund per Financial Policy. Article 3, $3,845.86 from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund to cover a capital project All right. That takes us to the first motion. Ms. Sullivan?
Moved to take the proposed consent agenda articles as printed in the warrant out of order to be part of the proposed consent agenda and acted upon as one item without debate.
And Mr. Fleming, you're seconding that?
Yes.
All right. We will put that to a vote. So get your clickers out. This is a majority vote on Motion 1, and this is to take those three articles and put them into the consent agenda. Let's close the vote. And that passes 142 yes to 23 no. That is a majority. Motion number two by the FinCom again. Ms. Sullivan?
Vote on the consent agenda items as shown in the proposed consent agenda.
It's a majority, too. All right. I'm going to, I'm going to do this, because it looks like we don't have the electronic voting set for the second motion. So let's do this. Can you set it quickly? Yeah, okay. Let's give us a second to just get that set up. It's a majority. Just do motion two. And I'm going to read the motion again. It is to vote on the consent and agenda items as shown on the proposed consent agenda, All right. The vote is open. And again, this is the second consent agenda. You're actually voting on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Let's close the vote. And that passes 148 to 19 with one abstention. All right. That takes us to Article 4. And Ms. Sullivan?
Moved that the appropriation of $392,500 from free cash under Article 2, Motion 1 of the October 18th, 2021 Special Town Meeting for the purposes of SEOR 1 and 1, 1, what? Thank you. For purposes of SEOR INI Study Removal, MWRA, is hereby rescinded. That $392,500 is appropriated for the purposes of SEOR INI Study Removal, MWRA, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $392,500 under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. That all or a portion of such sum may be borrowed from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend the aforementioned funds for such purpose, execute any agreements necessary in connection with such borrowing, and take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project.
And Mr. Fleming, you are seconding, correct? All right. On the motion, Ms. Sullivan?
The Finance Commission voted, vote was unanimous to support this, 5 to 0.
Okay. So this is a two-part article, and a two-part motion. One is to rescind a vote from, from the past of this body, and the other is actually to borrow the same amount. This is a bit of a structural article in order to be compliant with borrowing for this purpose. And I'm going to actually ask, you want Tony to say? Tony, can you just explain what we're doing here, and which might save? I know we have a registered speaker, but it is a little bit complicated.
Sure. So going back to in 2020 with COVID, we decided we were going to borrow for every capital item on the plan to preserve as much cash as we could going into the next year. We just didn't know what was going on. Well, the following year, we spent a whole lot of cash. This project was on there to expend the cash. When the MWRA came to collect their due, they informed us that they couldn't take cash because they get their money from the state revolving fund and from the federal government, and even though it's a zero-interest loan to us, they need us to pay it back over the course of 10 years through a borrowing so that they can meet their borrowing guidelines and their borrowing covenants. So it's just swapping one for the other. It seems a little ridiculous, but this was a MWRA zero-interest loan, and we get grant proceeds. This was a quarter of the project, and we got the rest of the money from them. It's just how they happen to structure their loans that doesn't work for us in this particular case.
All right. And I do have a registered speaker. Mr. Nardelli, where are you? You want to grab a mic right over there? Okay. And again, we're going to ask people to try to get to, I, I will do a better job of announcing registered speakers, so you get to the microphone. Mr. Nardelli, want to identify yourself and tell us where you're from?
Thank you, Nardelli. 69 Willow Street, District 7.
Can you?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Can you hold the microphone up so we can hear you, sir?
Hello?
There we go.
There we go. My, my first question is, would a yes vote increase our water rates at any time in the future, and if so, by what percentage?
Mr. Manager, do you want to take that?
No. The actual debt service payment for this is, it's minimal, it'd be under $40,000, so we wouldn't even adjust the rates for that amount.
Follow-up, Mr. Nardelli?
One follow-up question. The last sentence states, "If this article is not approved, the town will remain out of compliance and may jeopardize its eligibility to receive additional funding from MWRA for the future projects." How are we currently out of compliance?
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so we, they, they need a borrowing, not cash. So if we don't move forward, they would consider us non-compliant with this, which wouldn't allow us to take advantage of their zero-interest loans and their grants in the future.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Nardelli. Any, anybody else on this? Seeing none, we're going to put it to a vote. Folks, this is borrowing, so it is a 2/3 quantum of vote, 2/3 majority to pass. Let's close the vote. All right. 158 to 10 with one abstention. That is a 2/3 majority. That passes. That takes us to Article 5, motion from the FinCom. Ms. Sullivan?
Moved that the sum of $580,959 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the Special Education Reserve Fund.
All right. And Mr. Fleming, you're seconding? Ms. Sullivan, anything on the motion?
Yes. The Finance Commission voted unanimously to support this motion, 5 to 0. As I mentioned in the presentation, we feel this is an appropriate use of free cash. We're using one-time funds to shore up a reserve account. This will fund the reserve to the maximum allowable balance of 2% of net school spending. It will only be used for unexpected or emergency special education expenses, and it represents about 2.3% of the total free cash balance that exists. Thank you.
All right. And I'm going to note that the Board of Selectmen voted 3 to 2 to oppose this, and I'm going to call on Superintendent Luff, who has a few comments on this on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Committee, committee members, very much appreciated hearing this.
It's not wrong.
Yeah, we can't hear you. There we go. I think you're good. Try it again.
Where is he sitting?
He's right there. We'll have him go to the podium. How's that?
I am Tim Luff, I'm the Superintendent of Schools. As I said, thank you, Madam Moderator, thank you to the members of the town meeting and to the committees. Article 5, as you've already seen, is to see if you will, once again, transfer from surplus revenue or other available funds to appropriate to the Special Education Reserve Fund. Next slide, please. So as you've heard from the Finance Commission, we are requesting $580,959 to move to our Special Education Reserve Fund for the maximum amount possible by law, which is 2% of the total net school spending. The current balance reserve is $1 million. Very much appreciate the town meeting in the spring allocating $300,000 to this account. The purpose of the reserve is for unanticipated and unbudgeted special education costs. Now, I really want to focus on the fact that special education costs and the cost center is one of those volatile cost centers that we have, and there are significant unanticipated funds, costs that could come our way. Next slide, please. So what are some of those costs that might fall into this category, you ask? So these are not normally budgeted things that we know about. They are truly unanticipated. For example, a student placed out of district who moves into Norwood during the school year. Tuition can range from anywhere from $70,000 even up to $600,000, and that includes, in addition to, transportation costs for some of those students, depending on where they are. There are some provisions in the law that assist school districts with those move-ins, but that doesn't apply to students who move from out of state, or students who are placed in what we call collaborative schools, other public collaborative schools within the state. Things like reductions of federal funding. You heard tonight about Medicaid, for example, from our representative. We currently receive about $1.2 million in federal funding for our special education students to provide legally required services. Obviously, with the questions around federal funding, that would be an unanticipated issue if that was to go away. We talked about Medicaid loss. We currently receive services for medical services provided, reimbursement for medical services provided in schools, so things like occupational therapy, physical therapy, behavioral analyst services, nursing services, therapeutic services, speech services, and more. And that, right now, funds at least three full-time equivalent staff in the schools, as well as brings in other revenue. And as you know, we discussed this at fault at Springtown Meeting, and we have brought in additional $200,000 last year within these funds. But again, if those were gone, that would be an unanticipated loss for our town. Also, extraordinary staffing costs. We have students and changes with students that could require 1-to-1 aids or medical services in schools. Again, things that we don't anticipate when we're developing our budget process. Next, please. So how is money taken from the reserve? This is not something that we can just, as a school committee, unilaterally take and add to our operating costs, nor should it be a budgeted operating cost. This is truly for something that we should not know about. And it requires a majority vote by both the school committee and the Select Board prior to actually removing these funds from the reserve account. This is a true reserve stabilization account that is set aside for the purposes discussed by the Finance Commission tonight. We had $550,000 budgeted from this account at the direction of both boards for FY '25 due to some significant increases in out-of-district tuitions. However, we did not need that this past year. We actually funded, allocated funds in a more conservative fashion, and we were able to not use those funds. Those funds transferred into our budget for FY '26 and remain in our operating budget. I argue that those money should not be in our operating budget, but should be in a reserve account, and in fact, we will be transferring those, that $550,000, back into the reserve account so it can truly be there for a rainy day if something is to come up. And future budgets won't be prepared with the dependence on any of reserve account at all. That is not the intent of this, nor should it be. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, there's a history of the reserve account. In FY '21, there was an initial deposit of about $600,000. In FY '22, that carried over, and an additional deposit of $250,000 was made by the school committee through their budget. In FY '23, there was a withdrawal of about $150,000 for increases, unanticipated increases in tuition, contracted services, and some repair and maintenance. FY '24, that remained at $700,000. Through FY '25, and this past fiscal year where you have provided additional $300,000 at the annual town meeting. I will note that we had asked for the full funding at the annual town meeting, and that was reduced to the $300,000 last year. That $550,000 that came out was in FY '25 for some tuition increases that were concerns for the town and the district. And again, we plan to move those funds back into the reserve account to use it for actual purpose. Next slide, please. As you can see here, why? We know the town, as you have heard tonight, is in a structural deficit. We want to maximize the amount of the reserve regardless, regardless of the deficit. Special education services are mandated by law, required. So if one of those costs come up, we just can't say, well, we're just not going to fund it. It's something that we actually have to do. As we seek to address those budgetary concerns in the upcoming years, we're aware, we're going to have to make reductions, we're going to have to budget more conservatively. And this is one of the reasons that we're here this evening, and rather, at annual town meeting, as I draft and develop a preliminary budget that we have been drafting now. Knowing that this reserve account is full and there for unanticipated costs, I will be able to develop my FY '27 budget more conservatively to bring to town meeting in the spring. And having those funds there, if there's unanticipated costs, will allow me to do that. Without the reserve fund, which again requires the approval of both boards, if there was an unanticipated need, we would have to come to town meeting to actually appropriate emergency funds, which is difficult to do in the case of mandated special ed services that have to be implemented immediately upon a student's arrival, or when services are agreed to by a team. So with that, I thank you very much, and take any questions to the moderator.
Thank you. I have several registered speakers. Mr. Orfanos, if you could get yourself to a microphone right now, and also Ms. Mankiewicz, you are right after Mr. Orfanos, and we can move quickly. All right, so Mr. Orfanos, you're up first.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Greg Orfanos from District 9. I have two questions. I'd like to ask the Selectmen individually to speak on this issue since it wasn't a full 5 to 0 like most of these are. So if some Selectmen would like to speak to this issue, I'd like to hear.
Ms. Groh, do you want to take that for the Selectmen?
Yes, but through you, Madam Moderator, is the request to have each of us give our reasons why we've took the position we took.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Sorry. My question is, would they like us to each answer? I believe that was the way that--
Whoever would like to speak, yes.
I think, so I'm asking the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to represent the Board of Selectmen on that.
Okay. Madam Moderator, we believe we'd like Selectman Plasko to speak to this.
Okay, and Mr. Plasko, you are registered to speak. So is this going to be you're registered to speak, or are you just going to respond to this?
No, this should cover it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'll speak for the three who voted to oppose this, and the other two, of course, are free to answer your questions as well. We recommend to the town meeting board that they reject the request for $580,959 from free cash for the Special Education Reserve Fund. This seems sound to us, but it should not be considered at this time. The appropriate time to discuss this request is during next year's annual budget discussions, only six months away. This request failed last spring, and a second review should not be coming at this time. This should be wait until after we do the looking forward steps outlined by the Finance Commission Chair in her opening presentation. Any one budget proposal brought forward on its own seems worthy of support when it is not considered with all the other financial needs of the town. However, we do this, we deny ourselves the opportunity to see all the needs so that we're able to properly prioritize them. There is no identified need currently. If an emergency need arises in the next six months, for more than the $1 million already available in this reserve and other funds in the school budget, and remember, this past year, they ended with a surplus of $1 million eight, we have never failed to meet that obligation, to supply and pay for the obligations of this type. If such a need arises, we shall still have at least $15 million in free cash available to us to make and meet such obligations. With our serious financial, excuse me, reading S&amp;P Global Bond Rating Report, we must be very careful not to seriously draw down free cash to avoid possible downgrading of our bond rating. With our serious financial forecast for the coming year, it is not prudent to just park such money in a special account that has not been used for years. Last time it was used, it's only been used once in the last five years, and that was for $150,000. We have a million and all the other free cash I mentioned, so we just think this is the inappropriate time.
Mr. Orfanos, are you good?
Thank you. Thank you for that response. I do agree that, to me, this is a budget item, and in six months, put it in the budget. That's the way I feel about it, so. It's a worthy issue, but, you know, there's still $1 million even in there you really haven't had to use it. Thank God, you know, that's the case. But my feeling is that it should wait six months for the budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Orfanos. Ms. Mankiewicz, and also Mr. Lynch, if you can get yourself to a microphone, you're the next registered speaker. Ms. Mankiewicz.
Anne Mankiewicz, District 7, Representative. I have a question. How many students do we place out of district that we have to pay tuition for?
Superintendent?
There are currently 80 students placed out of district.
Okay, so 82 students' needs are not being met by the special needs program in Norwood, correct?
The special needs program in Norwood funds the out-of-district programs for those 80 students.
Okay.
Is there a follow-up, Ms. Mankiewicz?
Yes. By out of district, it's my understanding that you pay tuition to another town for a special needs student whose needs are not being met by Norwood's special needs program. Am I confused?
That would be correct.
Okay. How many students do we take in from other districts into our SPED program?
Mr. Superintendent?
We don't currently have students coming in, being tuitioned into our in-district programs.
Okay. At this point, I would like to make a motion to amend Article 5 such that all purchased supplies be line item in all school budgets.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mankiewicz, I don't understand that motion, that amendment.
I'd like to add an amendment on to this budget request, that for school budgets, that there be line item numbers put in place for basically supplies that are purchased.
I think that is not within the scope--
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, not within the scope of this article. So unfortunately, I cannot allow that.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynch.
Ed Lynch, District 7. My question was answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mr. Plasko, I think you already spoke, so you should be good. Anyone else on the article? Yes, sir, in the back, can you?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, through you. Mike Berry, District 3. Just a question through to the Superintendent. State law says that allows up to a maximum of 2% dedicated towards net school spending. I didn't know if he had any point of comparison as to what percentage of school districts in the state are doing the full 2%, and which ones may be doing less. Thank you.
Mr. Luff?
It very much depends on how people are budgeting for unanticipated costs. Many districts will use circuit breaker funds, which is reimbursement that comes from the states, and different other avenues within the actual budget itself. So I don't have a number generally, but the 2% is a very common number for those accounts.
Thank you. Anything else? Can you just go to the mic right there?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brian Gunning, District 3. My comment is on behalf of the members of District 3, who I have spoken to innumerably regarding these proposals to take money from free cash. I'm completely against this, as are many members of my district. The future can be seen if you read the papers. Whitman Hansen, they are going through the budget crisis that is predicted for us imminently, and they are, they are voting on mass layoffs in the school department. We need every penny we can in free cash because we have a looming override that is coming down the road, and we need money to face that clearly when it comes, because it's coming. So tying up this money in any account that doesn't allow us to spend it when we need to, which we're going to, everyone is predicting this budget crisis, it's coming. And so, on behalf of the members of District 3, I think we should keep every penny we can free and clear to address our problems down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunning. Ms. Barrows, over, could you, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Carolyn Barrows, District 8. I appreciate the desire to keep funds free and clear for issues that are impending upon us. I would also urge you to consider that with federal budget cuts, the issues that are impending upon us reside in our education systems, including our special education systems, which we receive $1.2 million a year from federal government. So that is already beyond our existing reserve fund. So if that disappears, which it very likely could, because we have no idea what the federal government's going to be cutting in the future, we should consider this one of the impending pieces. Additionally, I would like to encourage folks to remember this rhetoric of keeping all the free cash clear when we come up against the other issues of budget tonight in purchasing land, because you're tying up cash there, too.
Barrows, we're not talking about that right now.
Okay, thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kenechi. And there's a mic right up front there, sir.
Madam Moderator, Steve, is this going? Steve Kenechi, District 4. Mr. Plasko spoke earlier, and I'm a little bit confused. I agree with everything he said, but I don't know if, if this is going to be delayed till spring if we vote on this, or if I can make a motion now to delay this until Springtown Meeting.
You would have to amend the motion.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion to--
You'd probably want to amend the motion to indefinite postponement.
Okay, to indefinite postponement.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you need to, Mr. Kenechi, you need to come up here and write that up, along with your second, who seconded that? Was it, okay, Ms. Taylor? We need you both to sign a motion on indefinite postponement. So we have now received an amendment for indefinite postponement on this. I will continue, that is what we are debating, because we will actually vote on the amendment. And we'll see if that amendment becomes the main motion. So anything further on indefinite, an amendment for indefinite postponement? Do we, do we see the FinCom? Does the FinCom want to say something?
I'm just confused. Couldn't we just vote the, vote the motion down? Wouldn't that have the same result?
No, that's an amendment. It's an amendment for indefinite postponement, which is an amendment that you can make to this motion.
I think what I said prior stands. The FinCom supports putting $580,000, sorry, $959 into the Special Education Reserve.
Okay, all right. Anything further? All right, seeing none, we're actually going-- All right, seeing none, we're actually going to vote on, oh, Ms. Neil Rizzo, were you raising your hand there?
Am I speaking on the--
Well, hold on, let's get, can you get to a microphone and ask? I'm recognizing you to speak. You would speak on this, you're going to speak on the article. So if you don't agree with indefinite postponement, you would speak out against indefinite postponement. If you agree that we should go ahead with the original motion, you would say, you would say that, and that you don't want to approve indefinite postponement. So the article is still the article.
Katie Neil Rizzo, District Two. So can I speak to that, or do I need to speak to the indefinite postponement?
You're speaking, you can, you're speaking on the article.
Okay. Katie Neil Rizzo, District Two. What happens if we do not allocate this money to the Special Education Reserve Fund, and in the interim, we accrue some, we have a student move into town who has extraordinary costs for their special education plan, and we are over the money that, it would cost more than the money we have set aside, in excess of what we have put aside?
Superintendent Love?
Well, we would have to come to town meeting to appropriate those funds and request emergency funds.
But that wouldn't come until May? The next town meeting?
It would, okay, so if there was an emergency, they might have to call a town, special town meeting for that purpose, I think that's fair to say. If there was an emergency where the school committee said that that money was needed, and that town meeting would have to vote on putting that, using, using the fund, using your, your Special Education Reserve Fund for that, correct?
So the Special Reserve Fund, we would go to the Select Board and the School Committee for a majority vote. Anything in addition to that, we would have to appropriate through town.
Through town meeting, correct.
Okay. And then, again, through you, Ms. Moderator, Ms. Moderator. I guess I'm confused as to the difference between this type of set-aside funding and the, the types of funding that we took care of in the consent agenda, like that also seems like reserves, the workers' compensation insurance funding, and the OPEB trust fund? So I'm not sure why we okay those, but then this one's a big deal?
So this is, this is actually a Special Education Reserve Fund, so it actually only, because of that type of fund, it can only be approved by the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. Am I correct with that? And I'll ask the Director of Finance to just, yes. So it's because of the nature of the fund, Ms. Neil Rizzo?
Okay.
So it's a, as opposed to being in the actual budget, which is approved by town meeting?
Okay.
And then there's stabilization funds, which, those are utilized, they also have to be approved by town meeting.
Okay. And last question, please, through you. This article was put forth by the School Committee?
So article was requested by the School Committee--
Unanimously approved by--
And it is being put forth by the FinCom, correct?
Unanimously approved by Finance Commission?
Ms. Sullivan, yes?
And then approved by two out of the five Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything further? Okay, I'm gonna, it looks like, yeah, Mariga. You want to get yourself to a microphone?
Anne Marizola, District Eight, and Vice Chair of the Norwood School Committee. I did just want to remind the body that we did come in the spring and had money appropriated, and at that time, we were basically told, wait till the fall. So we're here. And now we're being told, nope, wait till the spring. So this does feel like it's just going to keep getting, the can getting kicked down the road. And so we are doing exactly what we were asked to do, that we now have a much better picture of what the free cash looks like, and we're back looking to make sure that we're shoring up those reserves. To those who say that we need every penny of that free cash to see what we, is going to happen down the road with our, you know, we fall off a fiscal cliff, I will tell you, we're already there, in a lot of ways, and a lot of us have been working on this quite diligently. And to that point, one of the things we're going to be expected to cover when that happens, by no stretch, is special education, because it is required by law. So there really isn't all that much of a difference. We're asking to fund this fully so that we don't have to come and ask for other free cash. It's, but we're going to have to spend that free cash on special education in the end anyway. So we're asking you now to appropriate it, so that we can have this on reserve, which is in a fiscally responsible way to be budgeting, because that money is going to have to be spent on our, on our children.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Homewood, did you have your hand up? Debbie Homewood, District Three. Is this part of the school budget? No, this is out of free cash. Okay. So it's not included in the, okay. Nope. Thank you. Yep.
Good evening. Julia Leoni from District Seven. Madam Moderator, I wanted to ask a question through you. Since this is a Special Education Reserve Fund, I was wondering if you, if we could have some clarity on how much we spend annually on special education?
Superintendent Love?
I will be seeking the advice of my business manager here, but I might have something here for you. So our projected FY '26 Special Education non-payroll expenses are $6,658,752. Our projected FY '26 Special Education payroll for our teachers is $16,426,015.
Is there a follow-up?
I, I guess I just want to clarify that this, right now, is about 2% of our free cash, and it's a very small portion of the overall special education expenditures that we incur. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Ferris?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ed Ferris, District Eight. Through you, I'd like to say that I'm against postponement, I am favor of the motion, and to remind this body, who many of you have been here, 2010 through 2014, when special education costs were skyrocketing, and this body could not move to cover those costs, and through those years, we lost music, we lost languages, we lost so many services within the schools, and we've been recovering, and it's taken this long to recover, and now we're going into another budget crisis. So having this as a reserve, especially for special education, which is required by law, is the one thing that we cannot not pay. But you got to think, the school runs a different budget cycle, and because they run a different budget cycle, that means the kids run a different budget cycle. This town body can't move fast enough to cover them when all of a sudden, a program has to be cut, because we got to move money to special education. And it's happened so many times in the past. It will happen again if we don't cover the costs. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Mr. Hall, and then Ms. Doyle, so, Ms. Doyle, if you get yourself to a microphone.
John Hall, District Six. I suspect I'm not the only one in the room who is both frustrated and confused, but I came up with an analogy that I hope it seems to be helping me. This is like insurance. You put money aside that you may not end up needing, it may be more than you need, or it may still end up to be less than you need for the expenses that come in. I would feel better about this proposal if there was more detail on the history of the expenses that wind up having to be covered, to indicate that a number like 700, whatever it is, is an appropriate level of risk coverage. But the problem is that nobody can come up with a number that's at all plausible, it just seems very erratic. A lot of the comments that I've seen people have are not actually on the, the specifics of this proposal, they're more like describing various disasters in the past, where we found ourselves unable to pay with the money we'd allocated, or the money we had available to allocate. No matter what you do with this, that possibility still exists, and it is probably greater than it was in the past, because of all the gyrations at the federal level affecting large sums of money that include payments to us. So what, what should we do under those circumstances? I, and I'm not inclined to have a choice between indefinite postponement and voting no on the motion. It just seemed to me like indefinite postponement is preferable, because it doesn't imply a judgment on the question. It simply says we don't know enough to make a choice, and we're willing to, to live with that uncertainty. But I would not be in favor of the proposal, because I don't think the case has been made that the expenses that are likely to bump into that are very likely to be covered by the amount that they're setting aside. I think the choice of how much was to be put aside was entirely based on the law's cap on those funds, rather than on any kind of an estimate of what the expenses will look like, when and if they show up.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Ms. Doyle?
Hi. Cheryl Doyle, District Seven. In the spring, we passed $300,000, because, through you, Madam Moderator, Mr. Plasko can correct me, he had reduced that $580,000 to $300,000, and we passed it, so we actually did put money in it, because it was in part of the spring, and it's still, we're still in the same year. The indefinite postponement, they can bring it back in the spring, where it should be, it shouldn't be at this special. They should bring it back then. The only time they've actually spent money out of here was back in '23, and it was only $150,000. So like Mr. Hall stated, they're not showing where there's this great expenditure that's going to happen, and it's just like the chicken or a hen or whatever saying the sky's falling. It hasn't fallen, and if it does, we just call a special, we come back, and we have money into free cash, and then we could vote it then, when we actually have hard facts. But I think this article is actually out of place, and it should be brought in the springtime where it belongs.
All right, thank you, Ms. Doyle. Yes, sir.
Ben Moser, District Seven. Through you, Madam Moderator, just so that I understand the functionality of the amendment that we're dealing with, is there a functional difference between tacking this amendment onto this, and just voting the whole thing down altogether?
There, there really isn't, Mr. Moser. It's going to be, have the same effect.
Great.
So what will happen, let me just explain. We vote on the amendment, the amendment becomes the main motion, which basically is either you're in favor of indefinite postponement or not.
Great, thank you. And then just to follow up on that, I am for the proposal itself. We want to keep the free cash so that we can have it in emergencies. What this is doing is taking a small portion of that free cash and setting it aside for a very specific emergency, so it all seems to fit well within that. I've been reading this weird dystopia novel lately, it's called The Newspaper. There is no such thing as guaranteed federal funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Yes, Mr. Morrison?
Mr. Morrison, just one, I'd like to move the question, please.
All right. Mr. Morrison has moved the question. Ms. Phelan has seconded. That is not debatable, so we are moving the question, and this is, the moving the question to move directly to a vote for, on the amendment. So I'm going to open the vote, I'm moving the question, it's a two-thirds majority. The voting is now open. Let's close the vote. All right. The question, the question has been moved with a two-thirds majority. That now takes us to the amendment, and the amendment is going to be for indefinite So just procedurally, you're voting on the amendment, if the amendment passes, that becomes the main motion. If it fails, we go back to the original main motion. All right. On indefinite postponement amendment, opening the vote. Close the vote. All right, the motion fails for indefinite postponement, so that takes us back to the main motion. Mr. Connolly.
Move the question, Madam Moderator.
Right, Mr. Connolly is moving the question on the original motion. Give us a second to get reset here, and this is going to be simply to approve the sum of $580,959 to be transferred from free cash.
Madam Moderator, you do have to vote on closing of the space.
Oh, that would, that would help if I did that. Thank you. So that would be, actually, that would be a point of order, Mr. Connolly. All right, so let's, we're, Mr. Connolly has moved the question. Do I have a second? I have from Mr. McFarland, a second. This is not debatable. It does take a two-thirds vote. And we'll get reset in a second. All right, the voting is now open on moving the question. And I do have to compliment Mr. Hall on wearing a Patriots jacket tonight. Give it ten seconds. Close the vote. 156 to 12, that is a two-thirds majority, so the question has been moved. Now, Mr. Connolly-- Now, Mr. Connolly, you are absolutely right. We are going to the main motion, which is the sum of 580,959 to be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the Special Education Reserve Fund. This is a majority vote. You're voting yes if you want to approve that, no if you do not want to approve that. Let's close the vote. And the motion passes by 102 to 67. All right. That takes us to Article 6 with a motion by the FinCom.
Moved that the sum of $2 million be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the capital stabilization fund.
And Mr. Fleming, you're seconding on the motion, Ms. Sullivan.
Yes. The Finance Commission voted unanimously, five to zero, in support of this motion. Again, we feel this is an appropriate use of free cash. We have historical levels of free cash, and part of our policy does express that we use anything in excess of $5 million to fund stabilization accounts. This money would be set aside for future capital expenditures in the cases where there may be insufficient free cash, a need to minimize borrowing costs higher than normal capital expenditures, or unusual emergency or extraordinary circumstances. We would need two-thirds of a vote of town meeting to expend any funds from this account, and the draft policy is currently under review by both the Finance Commission and the Board of Selectmen, and would require a plan to replenish the fund before any funds could be withdrawn. We just feel that given the 20, over $24 million of free cash, putting aside 8% for future unexpected emergencies is a good plan, and that is why the FinCom supports this motion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And I'm going to note that the Board of Selectmen voted five-zero to oppose this. I have several registered speakers. Mr. Afanos, if you can get to a microphone, followed by Mr. Lynch. And Mr. Afanos, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Afanos, District 9. Through you, again, you said it was five-zero that the Selectmen voted against?
Correct.
Number six, yeah. So could someone from the Selectmen tell us why they?
Well, Mr. Plasko, I know you've registered to speak on this. Are you going to be the representative to, do you want to take that at the same time?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I was going to speak individually, but I think it should basically cover the majority's We rise to recommend against, that the town meeting reject the $2 million Special Capitalization Fund. As noted during the discussion of Article 5, this request may seem sound at first, but it should not be considered at this time, in our opinion. The appropriate time to discuss this request is during next year's annual budget discussions, which will be decided in only six months. This request failed last spring, and a second review should be coming in the spring, not at this time. Such accounts are usually set up for specific identified large financial obligation and used for that purpose. Here we are, have an account for general capitalization needs, and they want, and they want to appropriate $2 million from free cash that once placed in this account will not be available for pointing for other financial needs. Tonight, you are being asked to appropriate $9,507,485 from our available free cash, leaving us with $15,352,594 to follow as expended. Early reviews suggest that, early reviews suggest that just to maintain level services for fiscal year, next fiscal year, we'll need $11 million. So some of tonight's requests are warranted, but they must, we must be cautious and make certain they were looking at the large picture. It does not make sense to us to take $2 million from free cash and place in the accounts that purpose is not clearly defined, that we have not yet established financial policies around and how to use these funds, and without a detailed funding strategy with regards to cash debt and a plan to replenish the funds in the account. Madam Moderator, through you, I would like to ask CFO, Mr. O'Neil, how he feels on the financial feasibility of this proposal at this time.
Actually, I'm going to hold off on that for a second because that's really, you're really responding to Mr. Afanos's questionnaire. I also saw some people looking at their yellow sheets, and I just want to clarify one thing. The yellow sheets talked about, it was prior to the Board of Selectmen taking their final vote on this, so you see a three-two that they decided to defer and that they would render their opinion before town meeting. They subsequently did take a vote, and it was five-nothing. Mr. Afanos, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to say I do support the Selectmen in this issue, that we should probably wait till the spring and address it at that time with the budget.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And Mr. Lynch, and then we'll go to Mr. O'Neil.
Ed Lynch, District 7. Thank you, Madam Moderator. When was the last time they just, they took money out of this account? It can only be used for certain things. Is that right?
I can actually answer that question. The account was just established at the last town meeting, so there's been no money put into the account yet, so nothing has been taken out.
Oh, okay.
Did I get that right, Ms. Sullivan?
Did. I would just like to point out that they did ask us to come back in the fall once we had a certified free cash number.
Okay. Well, we were just up there at the beginning of the meeting talking about a structural deficit that, you know, and everybody's talking about free cash and the future and stuff. To lock it into this thing with just certain uses, would it be available for anything or just a specific use?
Ms. Sullivan, do you want to take that?
Yes. Currently, in the draft policy, it would be used for, it would be only used for capital items.
I'm sorry?
It would be used for capital expenditures.
Okay. Well, to me, it's just kind of like the last few, they're, you're just moving it around. So I'm a no on this because, again, it's just about taking something that may be better for some other area at some other time than to mandate it goes for these, some of these other projects. So especially with that structural deficit you've been talking about for, until we figure out what's going on here, and then I would say no. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mr. O'Neil, if you would address Mr. Plasko's request.
Sure. Jeff O'Neil, Director of Finance, through you, Madam Moderator. I do agree with Mr. Plasko in terms of the establishment of this fund makes common sense and makes good fiscal sense. I think we do have an issue regarding the draft policy. I think we would like to see a more formal policy, more formal projection of what this money could be used for. So I do think it makes sense, and probably makes sense to bring back into this, in the spring when we have a better picture of what our financial, overall financial picture looks like. But I do agree that the fund makes sense to set up, and it does make sense to contribute to, but we'd need a little bit more of a formal policy or some sort of dedicated project that makes sense.
Lynn Drouin, District 3. I'm really confused here. We set up this fund, we put no money in it, we were told to come back in the fall to put money in it. Now we want to put money in it, and now we're saying no. So we have to wait until there is a capital expense, and then we have to come and vote to put money in the account where we should already have a count because we made, set up the fund. Somebody clarify that, please.
Ms. Sullivan, do you want to take that?
I will give it a shot. Okay. The plan is to fund a capital stabilization account for future capital purchases when there might be insufficient cash or capital, or, sorry, we might not have, we might, I have to get my mind straight.
That's exactly how I feel, but go ahead.
It was to put aside money for future capital expenditures, knowing that one of the major things we need in a structural deficit situation is there will be times when we still have to fund capital expenses. And this would allow us, in cases of where we didn't have any free cash or we did not want to borrow, that we could pull out of this account to help fund some capital and keep everything, keep it smooth.
Follow-up, Ms. Moderator, through you.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Ra.
So we have the fund, but we're not going to fund it.
That, they're asking, some people on town meeting floor are asking for not to be funded at this time and to come back in the spring. We've established the fund at the spring town meeting. We were asked to come back when free cash was certified. We are back when free cash has been certified, and I will add-
I'm with you right now, so go ahead, keep going.
I will add that when we were talking about establishing this fund, we did take into account all of the things that I talked about in our presentation. We looked at what we used for free cash to balance fiscal year '26. We looked ahead at what we needed to balance for fiscal year '27. We looked at our capital needs. We looked at the capital outlight plan that you all have, that it does go out five years. There's quite a bit of capital that is needed in the next five years. This is just there to be put aside in the case of, we'll approve a plan each year. If we need a little more, there's a stabilization account if we have to do it for whatever reason, an emergency and unforeseen, or if we just don't have enough free cash. I hope that helped.
Is there a follow-up, Ms. Ra?
Yes, there is. There is. So if it doesn't pass tonight, we'll come back in the spring and see if we're going to refund the fund that we've already set up that we're not funding tonight.
It's to be determined.
Great. Thanks.
That's a possibility.
Good evening. Carolyn Barrows, District 8. A clarifying question, Madam Moderator. This is only my second season in town meetings, so I'm curious, is there a difference in purpose between the spring meeting and the fall meeting, where people keep saying this belongs in spring, this belongs in fall? It seems, it's confusing.
So, let me tell you, the spring, the main spring town meeting is going to be the annual town meeting when we do the budget. Historically, our fall town meeting has been for financial, one-time financial expenses or to fund accounts once free cash has been certified. So typically, free cash is certified in the fall and is available, which is why you're seeing the types of, like the capital plan, which is a one-time funding. The annual town meeting is for the budget, which is the operating budget, which is reoccurring. There are one-time allocations that do happen in the spring as well, but as far as this article goes, I think it's safe to say the capital stabilization fund was established in the spring. The FinCom originally proposed funding it then, but was asked to wait until after free cash had been certified and in the fall, and also to have time for all the boards to review a capital plan, which, as I understand, as of now, all three boards have had an opportunity to review it. Both the FinCom and the School Committee have approved it. I think the Board of Selectmen has not yet, and that's the reason why it's here now, because they were asked to defer until this town meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So this is the right, I have a follow-up, if that's okay?
Yep.
So my question is in regards to the use of the fund. Just to clarify, because I feel like I've heard two different things. Is the fund specifically for emergency situations, or could it be used for any of the capital improvement plan that isn't funded through the pink sheet?
Ms. Sullivan, do you want to take that?
I would answer.
Or Mr. O'Neil, do you want to take that? Now, let Ms. Sullivan take it? Okay.
It would be up to town meeting, but it would be, we, the idea that the Finance Commission was it would be used if we didn't have free cash, if we couldn't borrow, right? It would be beyond, it would be an unforeseen circumstance beyond the capital plan if something comes up that we, we need, and we, it's not in the plan, and we don't have sufficient funds, or we don't want to borrow. This would help with that.
Okay. So again, just not for things that are in here that are not funded through here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And it was, as a stabilization fund, it would also, in order to-
Require two-thirds.
-fund anything, it would take a two-thirds vote of town meeting to do it, by the way, which is another distinction. Okay. Let me look over here. Who else on the motion? Mr. Shaughnessy.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Kevin Shaughnessy, District 6. After 40 years working for the town, I thought you'd recognize me. Maybe it's, maybe it's the glasses. And I don't, I mean, no disrespect to the FinCom, but it seems to me this is an executive board decision. They voted five to nothing. I don't know what the general manager's point of view on this, but I think it makes sense to wait until the, and I agree with what they're saying and the reasoning behind it, but if we have an executive committee and they vote that way, I'm going to back them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. I'll recognize you next time, sir. All right. Anything else? Mr. Greeley. And again, if you want to go to a microphone and raise your hand also, you can do that.
Such as this, right?
Right.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Joe Greeley, District 6. I really get the feeling that everybody's right here and everybody's wrong, meaning that I, personally, I will vote in favor of this. I think, as Madam Moderator just mentioned, now is, now is really the time, and not, not that this is a feeding frenzy on free cash, but a lot of, a lot of the free cash can be attributed to one-time events such as, and I'm just using one example, like the permitting fees from FM Global. And I'm just focused on that as one example. It may never happen anytime soon. Hopefully, somebody else is next in line, and it'll be repeated, but now is the time to try to take advantage of those one-time expenses. My fear, if we wait until the spring, is that so many other demands will come forward, and people will forget about this because we're all distracted by other things, and we'll lose the opportunity now to tuck this money away as either rainy day, whatever you want to call it, rainy day fund, one-time use, stabilization, whatever the, whatever the moniker is. But I do think now is the time to do it, and now is the time to put this money away in a reserve, just as we did with the special ed article before this. It's a given that we will spend the money, and I just think we lose an opportunity if we don't do it now. The caveat is, I'm really nervous when the boards don't, aren't unified at the front of the room, and I used to sit at the front of the room, and I do, it's somewhat disappointing that we've had a whole- One other point, Madam Moderator. On the pink sheets, I did turn the, turn the pink sheet over and I didn't see it, but I would remind people, those of us that have been around for a while, on one of the pages on the pink sheet, we used to be able, town meeting members, used to be able to flip it over on the back, on the second sheet, maybe, and look at how many reserves we have and what the balances of those reserves are. We go year to year, and we, if we put this $2 million in, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that we have a rainy day fund called Capital Stabilization Fund. So I would definitely recommend to the FinCom especially, that if there's a way to put those reserve balances back and make them visible, then it would be great if you could do that for the next time around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Mr. Howard.
(inaudible).
All right, Mr. Howard moved the second, and Mr. Connolly's second, moved the question, and Mr. Connolly's second. Question has been moved. That's a two-thirds vote. And let's open the voting. Let's close the voting. It passes. That takes us now to the main motion, which is that the sum of $2 million be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the Capital Stabilization Fund. This is a majority vote, and the voting is now open. Let's close the vote. Motion passes 84 to 80. All right, that takes us to Article 7. Thank God for electronic voting, folks. Article 7, Ms. Sullivan with the motion.
Moved by, moved that the sum of $6,176,677.36 be transferred from receipts reserved for appropriation sale of real estate, and $1,077,170.64 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to purchase for open space and recreation purposes upon such terms and conditions to be determined by the Board of Selectmen, a parcel of real estate located at 820 Napont Street.
And Mr. Fleming, you're seconding that? All right, Ms. Sullivan on the motion.
The Finance Commission voted unanimously to support this Article, five to zero. The funding sources for this article have changed since the original pink sheets were mailed to town meeting members. The Finance Commission originally recommended borrowing for the land for 30 years with the reason that, that people, people would be using this land for 30 years and we could pay it over time. We could then appropriate the $6 million that had been set aside for open space to purchase capital items that would have been financed for a shorter period of time, that we would not want to finance, we would prefer to pay cash for. This would have, this would have resulted in putting less pressure on the debt service, but it was not possible due to borrowing, the borrowing not being added as an option in the article. Bond Council and the Department of Revenue, when asked, said they would not approve a bond issuance for this article. The Board of Selectmen and the FinCom met yesterday to discuss a solution. After a lengthy discussion, the boards have come to an agreement that results in essentially the same impact to debt service by shifting funding sources over the next three articles. Here, we recommend using the $6.176 million that had been set aside from the Forbes Estate sale at a previous town meeting and adding an additional $1.077 million of free cash to play, to pay for the property. I will explain the other funding source changes in the next two articles. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Mizuko. I think you are also representing on the motion.
Yeah, I have just a couple of slides.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will be brief. I'll talk about both property acquisitions as a whole, just to make sure we can have the whole frame of the discussion. If we could advance the slide. So just some key facts to frame the body's discussion tonight. The size of the two parcels we're looking at, 20 acres for the Kofsky Farm, two acres for the Pachakowski Properties, a purchase price of $7.25 million for the Kofsky Farm property, and $1.5 million for the Pachakowski Properties. I know the original yellow sheets had a $1.8 million number in there. That was the Board of Selectmen's not to exceed the number. They felt, after they met an executive session, that regardless of where our appraisal came in at, they would not pay more than that. Fortunately, the appraisal came in at $1.5 million, and the tentative seller has agreed to that title. The town has agreed to allow Mrs. Kofsky to live out the remainder of her years on the property before beginning any disturbance of the property. That was the family's number one wish. The Kofskys have lived there for many, many, many decades, and Mrs. Kofsky is in her 90s, although we wish she will enjoy many more years there. There are no other restrictions from the sellers. The Pachakowski property contains no other restrictions. The motion will include the language, or should say for the Kofsky Farm, does include the language, for open space and recreation purposes, to ensure that we are going to in perpetuity use the land for open space and recreation purposes. And it's important to note that the motion at town meeting is the law, and we have other properties where we have to look back to see the history of it and what's allowed, and it comes back to the town meeting vote and how town meeting acquired it. So that language is particularly important to be in the motion. We would make sure to sequence the closing, should town meeting want to purchase both parcels, or it's technically three, but both land, that the Kofsky Farm would close first prior to the Pachakowski Properties. If we are not going to purchase the Kofsky Farm, the Pachakowski Properties would not be in the interest of the town. So in some event, that there was a problem with closing, we would not go forward with the Kofsky Farm, sorry, we would not go forward with the Pachakowski Properties if we did not close on the Kofsky Farm. And it's important to note, both the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission have unanimously supported both acquisitions. I think, as everyone knows, they have been on our, the Kofsky Farm has been on our open space plan for close to 20 years. So it's been, the town has had its eye on it for quite a while. If we could advance to the map? Just so we can all have a frame of reference of the map, you can see the area that is the Kofsky land and the two parcels that are the Pachakowski property. The small blue parcel at the front is not being acquired at that town at this time. That is Mrs. Pachakowski's property. The, Mrs. Kofsky, sorry. Thank you. Mrs. Kofsky's property, and that is where she's going to continue to reside. The family has guaranteed that they will offer us the, the property should and when that come available for sale. The next couple of slides are just a few pictures. If you haven't had a chance to be there, we'll go through them. All right, thank you. Moving on to the purchase price and the sources, we would be looking at a combination of Forbes proceeds, and I'll talk about that in just a moment, and free cash for the Kofsky Farm, and then borrowing for the Pachakowski property. I've been asked by a number of people, what about CPA funds? So it's important to note, one, that the CPA generates about $700,000 a year locally, and then about $300,000 from the state match. So even the borrowing for the Pachakowski property would take up at least 10% of our CPA money every year. We're a 1% CPA community. Some communities have gone 2% and 3%. So it's not a great source for larger land purchases. However, I believe that CPA will be the source that we would use for many of the site amenities that we would want to see on the property in time. Now, it's important to note that the money that's put aside for Forbes, and again, I'll talk about that in just a moment, accrues interest to the general fund, not to its own fund. I don't know why that's how the state has set up the law, but the state has set up the law that way. So even though we're using an additional $1 million of free cash, for the last several years, that $6 million has been generating some interest in the general fund each year. Next slide. Briefly go through the long saga that was the Forbes Hill money and how we came to about, be about this. Many of you in this room will remember. We did purchase the Forbes Hill property in 2017 for $13 million to prevent development and ostensibly to, for open space, although I think more to prevent the development. The termination was quickly made after a citizen process to sell the property. There were actually two failed attempts to sell the property. One did not happen, one did not come through. The other one was the subject of a bid protest. We were at some point in time willing to take up to a $2 million loss on the Forbes property. As a result of the pandemic and really just sheer good luck that has blessed Norwood, we ended up selling the property to Moderna, or to the real estate company, for a net $10 million profit, unheard of in municipal land. We are not in the land speculation business, but we'd get an A plus at least for this property. Out of that $10 million, $4 million was transferred over a couple of years to two stabilization funds. Now, what we actually had to do was purchase capital items to be able to move that money around. That's how DOR wanted us to get there. $2 million was placed in regular stabilization, $2 million was placed in the override stabilization fund, which funded the budget, I believe, two cycles ago. Now, in May of 2022, this body voted to transfer the remaining amount, about $6.1 million, to an open space stabilization fund. Unfortunately, about six months later, the Department of Revenue called us and reminded us, we're not allowed to actually do that. Their exact language is, "The statute does not contemplate what we want to do," which is a phrase they use with me quite a bit. Basically, towns don't sell property that they bought after two or three years for a huge profit. So we were a little bit outside of what the statute allows. Therefore, it sits in what we call a real estate receipts reserve for expenditure account. Next slide. And just by comparison, when we purchased Forbes, in Forbes, in 2017, we paid about $480,000 per acre. If you adjusted for inflation, that was about $630,000 per acre. The Kofsky Farm property comes in at about $362,000 per acre. Next slide. Couple other considerations for what's actually going to happen to the property. And first and foremost, we've gotten the question, what about housing? What would be built there? Absolutely, housing could be built there. On the Kofsky Farm property, the current, they have a preliminary subdivision plan based on a wetlands delineation that shows about 30 homes could be built there. It might be a couple less. Some opinions are that the wetlands delineation could be looked at, and it could be more. We all know that there is a housing crisis in the Commonwealth. However, here in Norwood, we should be recognized that should housing be developed there, it would likely be homes north of $1 million each, and we are currently constructing more than 300 rental units on two parcels in town this year alone. Now, in terms of potential tax revenue or tax loss, 30 homes in that $1 million range would generate about $300,000 in tax revenue. And while that sounds like a windfall, we always have to remember that development comes with a cost. We have to provide services for that. We are fortunate, we have a significant commercial base here in Norwood that pays half and sometimes more than half of the taxes in town, because once residents and people move into houses and once they start putting kids into the school system, you start to see those costs go up. So the problem with how Prop 2 and 1/2 works in Massachusetts is you get this short-term hit of money when development happens, and it's great, we built a bunch of homes and we get a couple hundred thousand dollars, and then a couple of years down the road, the costs actually start coming in. So there's certainly no, no windfall that would have any significant impact on the budget. Now, in terms of tenants, the Pachakowski houses, one is unoccupied, the other one is owned by Mr. Pachakowski and his wife. I believe his family have lived on that site for close to 100 years. They are prepared to vacate when we close. They are going to move, we hope they stay in Norwood. The one house that we're acquiring on the Kofsky Farm property, there is a member of the family who would like to stay there, taking, to take care of the mother while she continues to occupy the main house. They've asked about that. The Selectmen would have to negotiate that, but that has to be at a market rate. We're not allowed to allow somebody to live in property that we own for anything less than a market rate. In terms of what we would do with the Pachakowski properties, actually, if we could advance to the next slide. The two houses have a number of options. One option is, once we put a committee together, and we'll talk about that, one or two of those houses could be sold to reduce the entire, with a smaller lot in the back, to reduce the overall purchase price. We would be able to work with the Housing Authority if we wanted to, to rent out those parcels. I did speak to the Executive Director of the Housing Authority recently. They're always looking for two or three-bedroom houses, so we'd be able to have them manage the fact, tenants would be in there for several years while the use limitation on the farm expires, would cover the cost of those houses, let them depreciate a little bit more until we're ready to move on with what we might want to do there, a parking lot or a road in. Now, as for the Pachakowski properties themselves, they do add, in my opinion, significantly to the overall parcel. If you remember back to that map, that would be a great place to put in an entryway in a parking lot to maximize the use of that 20 acres. Next slide. Most of you familiar with the general reasons to buy open space and why would we spend money at a time like this in open space? To protect natural resources and support biodiversity, livability. We are a dense community. It would prevent the development, it encourages outdoor recreation, better stormwater retention. It's important to note that even with new design standards, any neighborhood going in, we still only have so much stormwater we can handle, treat, and discharge into the river, regardless of how good of a system that we have. But more importantly, if we go to the next slide, what would we be able to do with the space? Walking trails, a larger community garden, dog-friendly areas, potential for sports fields, low-impact outdoor events, so think a little bit more like an art in the park than in Norwood Day, bird watching and pollinator areas. Somebody suggested the Recreation Department could have overnight camping there. It would certainly be placed for a picnic area, trails on the property itself and connecting to the trails network that's being built out, out behind airport property and really throughout town. The Trails Committee has done a fantastic job with that. It would be a true open space area for the town. We're not talking major facilities. We're not going to put a DPW building there, nor are we going to put a new civic center there. You could put fields and the site amenities that would support items like that. Next slide, please.
Mr. Mizuko, you have about 50 seconds left. Do you need more time?
One more minute beyond that, I'll go quick.
Okay, go quick.
Thank you. Citizen input. So the way we would get there is the Board of Selectmen would establish an advisory committee consisting of members from some of the key boards in town, as well as citizens, to really plan out what we want to see there, how we would want to sequence it, and how comfortable we would feel with the different uses. Next slide. So, three main reasons why to buy open space now. It's a once-in-a-generation chance to preserve Norwood's last farm, expand trails, protect water and wildlife, and provide true community service. Development is going to continue in Norwood, so is redevelopment. We have no open space left. Finally, in terms of the financial challenges that we face, every community in the Commonwealth is facing them, and not purchasing the property will not make our budget any easier. It will not provide us with any windfall of money. We are going to be in the situation we're in regardless, it is whether or not we are there with open space or not. And the final slide. The land, it's important to think long-term. This land is going to outlast all of us, and this is our opportunity to protect it and preserve it for those who come. We've been talking about it for 20 years. We put the bulk of the money away several years ago, and I know as the comprehensive plan process goes on, open space comes up again and again. So now it is time for this body to decide, should we move forward with these purchases or not? And we'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mizuko. Okay, we have a bunch of registered speakers, so I'm going to ask folks to, Catherine Anger Peir, if you can get to a microphone, and also Joe Greeley, you'll be next up. And then after, Mr. Greeley, Kevin, if we can get a microphone to Ms. Howard.
I didn't realize I was going to go first. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Catherine Anger Peir, District 9. And I would like to emphasize that part is District 9. These properties, and I'm going to be speaking both on the Kofsky Farm and also the Pachakowski Properties, are both squarely in my district. Earlier this month, I had the pleasure of joining several residents, including Joe, to go on a trail walk around the property. The trails border these properties directly to the north. The land is beautiful. You can forget that you're living in a suburb. You think that you are in the middle of a field in the woods, and you can walk around for hours, which we did. Thank you, Joe. Those are really pleasant two hours to spend. So you may hear comments about, we should let this land be developed for the single-family housing, or we should have this land developed for senior housing. I hear both of those messages. Regarding senior housing, this is not the right location. It is not close to any services, and it is on a very busy road that frequently gets backed up if any of you have had the pleasure of taking to Ponsett Street during rush hour. In terms of the desire to have more single-family housing and to have more tax revenue, in my opinion, for this area of land, it's better to keep it as open space. My neighbors have already seen the partial destruction of woods near the Pendergast Circle, apologies, to make a parking lot, and also the demolition of a grove between Richland Road and Tamworth Road to create a couple houses- Road and Tamworth Road to create a couple houses that are now selling or proposed to sell for $1.5 million. Once we lose the open space, as Mr. Mizuko noted, that space is gone. And this is really wonderful open space to have in town. It was also mentioned at the town meeting info session that occurred a week and a half ago, that this piece of property is too far away for most residents in town to use, to which I would say, what about us who live on the other side of Route 1 in District 9? I would love to have a place where I and my neighbors could easily walk to, to use that open space. We already have to travel such a long way to use Father Max and the high school and the haws that were used to that. It would be nice to have something in our own area to be able to use. So I support this in the following article. I would prefer to have this land remain open. The town has been prioritizing this land to be open space for several years. It is not a snap decision, sort of like what Forbes was like. This is sort of respecting the long-term thinking that the town has been planning for open space. By purchasing it, we will guarantee that this will stay open space. We will set up that long-term planning committee. We will be able to have Norwood residents say what is best for Norwood for this space. And so in that regard, I support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Greeley? No, we're just doing Article 7, just 7.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, town meeting. Joe Greeley, District 6. I'm writing this, I'm writing this letter. I sent a letter out to all known town meeting members. Known being, your email was registered with the Clerk's Office, so thank you, all 178 of you. I wrote a letter to advocate for the town's acquisition of both the Kofsky property and the two Pachakowski properties, I'll talk about them when that comes up. You probably think I'm only going to be talking about trails, but that's the only time the word trails is going to come up in the next three minutes. Passionate about trails, oops, but this, but my request goes far beyond any desire to simply, quote, "create trails." It's a proven fact that communities that reserve open space at a higher rate also garner higher property values, brought about by the improved quality of life for community members. The acquisition of these properties would significantly increase the open space and passive recreation opportunities, both within and beyond our town borders. Picture a Norwood version of Walpole's Adams Farm, for instance, a local destination for outdoor educational events, family gatherings in a natural setting, or as simply a haven to recharge. For those who believe that Norwood spends too much on open space and not enough on infrastructure, and too much on open space, I had put together a schedule of the last five years, including tonight. The last five years, more than 112,000, sorry, I wish, more than $112 million has been requested for capital. The combined, the combination of these two articles puts this open space request at roughly 8% of that total five-year amount. The last time that any open space was presented to town meeting was with the proposed purchase of the St. Street Lot, which has now become Cooper Park. And that was proposed to be funded from CPA funds. The Norwood Trails Advisory, oops, the Norwood Trails Advisory Committee has two extensive trail systems adjacent to this property, one at Meadow Street and the other at Ledge View, which are part of the proposed tire trails which circumnavigates the entire town. Future possibilities for these new properties could include an ideal trailhead, complete with important amenities, parking restrooms, prime river access for canoes and kayaks, and possibly a future nature center. Norwood has endured many instances of open space lost to commercial and residential development. The Kofsky and Pachakowski properties represent the last remaining instance and suitable, suitable access to Norwood's little-known natural resources. Those natural gateways have been lost to prior generations like our own kids. But the community has a chance now to preserve similar funds for future, future, I'm sorry, similar lands for future generations with the addition of these properties. Another, another voice calls into question a potential conflict of interest, which has since been resolved, or even the appearance, this, this, several writers have used the phrases of "not yet," "not worthwhile" under current conditions, and the process has lacked transparency. We say quite the contrary. Our prior town meeting had the forethought and vision to reserve funds for exactly this purpose. The Kofsky property has been on the open space plan acquisition list for decades. To the "not yet" comment, we remind our community members that this is likely our last chance to acquire and reserve, preserve this gem. The fact that there is even an opportunity to acquire these properties is a once-in-a-generation gift that cannot be passed up. Our town government and town meeting had the foresight several years ago to secure the majority of the funding in anticipation of just such an opportunity. The two major boards in town have likewise voted in favor of, of the Kofsky Farm acquisition. I'd request that all town meeting members consider this proposal and vote in favor to support these property acquisitions for today and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Ms. Howard? And after Ms. Howard is Mr. Canetti, if you can get yourselves to a mic, sir. Ms. Howard?
Judith Howard, District 3. I am in full favor of this article, and I would just like to reiterate what the town manager had on his presentation, and to make the town of Norwood own the property in perpetuity as open space in perpetuity, and that development of commercial and residential projects, so that it's non-buildable of those items. But thank you, Mr. Town Manager, because it was an excellent presentation, and I'm in favor of, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Mr. Canetti and Mr. Ophanos, you'll be up next, if you can get to a mic. Mr. Canetti?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
And you're from District 4?
Steve Canetti, District 4. I'll begin by saying that I respect Joe Greeley's dedication to open space. We all value nature and the character of our town. But Article 7 isn't about whether or not we like open space, it's not whether or not it's good, it's about when and how we can afford it. Seems like the overwhelming reason to do it is because we're in trouble now, and if we don't build this, we're still going to be in trouble. So we might as well just do it because we've got the money. And I think a lot of households that have problems with their finances say the same thing about a lot of different things that come up in their lives. We're in trouble now, so why not, why not go to the casino? Why not do a number of things? We've been told that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, now-or-never moment. I know that feeling. I considered buying my neighbor's lot when she moved so I could expand my property. In this past summer, a friend's awesome sailboat became available. Both are wonderful opportunities, but the timing wasn't right, and the same applies here. Norwood is staring at a structural deficit, a likely override, growing pressure on our schools and municipal budgets. There is no shortage of capital projects we need to spend for. When households face this kind of strain, they don't rush into buying a big purchase, they wait until they can afford it. Physical restraint isn't lack of vision, it's responsible leadership. We've been told that the money is already set aside, but every dollar of free cash or CPA funds or other money that we have is a dollar unavailable for upcoming needs, including infrastructure, public safety, property tax relief, and our funds are limited, our needs are not. So this isn't a debate about whether or not we love open space, it's a question of timing, transparency, and priorities. True leadership means doing the right thing at the right time, not saying yes simply because something is available and we want it. Let's take the long view, protect our financial health before we take on new land and don't yet have a clear plan or budget to maintain it. Sometimes the boldest move is to wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canetti. Mr. Ophanos and then Ms. Mankiewicz, if you can get yourself to a microphone, and after that will be Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Greg Ophanos, District 9. Is there a reason why this, has this, has it been considered to put this in a, in the Conservation Trust versus, because there is concern amongst town meeting members about whether down the road we'll forget why we purchased this or it'll be used for another purpose. So is there a reason why it's not being considered to go into the Conservation Trust so we know for sure it'll stay?
Okay, Mr. Ophanos, let me ask Mr. Mizuko to address that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The language is making it clear with the purchase that it's for the purpose of open space and recreation. We could look at something like a permanent conservation easement, but that might limit us with what we want to do on the site when it comes to things like camping. Do we want a trailhead? So we're looking at it as open space and recreation, so we can maintain some limited use of the site without a strict no-use of the site. Doesn't change any of the wetlands regulations, we still have to follow those, but the motion is clear of what the purpose is, which is what governs what we're able to do with the property.
Follow-up, Mr. Ophanos?
Thank you. There have been other instances where a property was designated for a certain purpose, but then the purpose was changed a decade later and for another purpose. So that, that's the reason for the concern that it go into a trust of some kind, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ophanos. Ms. Mankiewicz and then Mr. Jordan, you'll be up next, if you can get to a mic, please.
Ann Mankiewicz, District 7. To follow on with what Greg said, I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 7, that if it's passed, the land be transferred to the Conservation Trust.
I'm going to have to ask town council if we can even do that.
Madam Moderator, through you and the members of the town meeting, I do believe that that is beyond the scope of the article that we have before us, which is simply a purchase upon terms as designated by the, the town manager for open space and for recreation purposes. That request would be out of scope from the article.
Okay.
Thank you for the, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, Ms. Mankiewicz. I know, we gotta, we gotta lower that. All right, Mr. Jordan?
Chris Jordan, District 4. I did have something prepared that was going to speak towards, you know, the development of single-family homes or the lack thereof, and, and why I feel that that is the case. But there was a common theme among, I'm, I'm going to kind of get away from that and just, there was a common theme before, excuse me, between the first two people who spoke, town manager and the other lady from District, excuse me, Catherine Anger-Pierre, forgive me if I mispronounce your name. And that was the disdain for single-family homes or the lack of affordability of single-family homes, or the, as the town manager said, we don't need $30 million single-family homes, we're building 300 rental units in town. Like, I don't understand why we don't want 20, 25, 30 million-dollar homes. I would love to see a development go in of million-dollar homes. Those are the people I want as my neighbors. Those are the type of people I want filling up our schools. Those are the people I don't, you know, that I want coming in and, and joining, you know, the youth programs in town. All right? The 300-unit apartment complexes are the reason we have, I don't, and I don't want to get gavelled for mentioning another article, but we need $500 extra thousand for special education. You think that the town is going to, that you think the expenses in the town are going to?
Mr. Jordan, no, Ms. Down, no, 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 no. There's no point, let Mr. Jordan finish.
If the expenses of a single-family home go up year after year, how are the expenses of a 300-unit town apartment complex going up year after year after year? I just want to, I know this, we're not talking about apartment buildings, but I just want to say, we're, we're excluding single-family homes and we're, and we're dropping $9 million to do so. And I think that's ridiculous, and it just goes to show the type of people that the progressives want to bring into this community. All right? They do not want the type of people who are going to be able to afford a nice residential home. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan. All right, I'm going to ask again that we treat people with dignity, we do not speak disrespectfully, we do not label people. So I ask that we keep it up. Mrs. Sullivan, you are not, Mrs. Quinn, you are not recognized. I'm going through registered speakers. I would be more than happy to recognize you after we finish registered speakers. Mr. Barrett, if you can get to a mic, you are next, and then Mr. Palmetier right after.
Joe Barrett, District 5. One thing good about going a little later is a lot of the points I wanted to make were already made, so this will be a little shorter than I thought. The Trails Committee has videos of otters swimming, beavers clapping their tails in the water, and pictures of waterfowl, including great blue herons and egrets calmly seen. This area is also habitat to a wide range of animals, captioned in video, photos through observation, including a bobcat, countless deer, turkeys, and a wide range of reptiles. All this is accessible and viewable from this particular property. Growing up in Norwood, I've seen much of what is, was once open space lost to commercial and residential development. The pastures of my childhood have been replaced by car dealership lots, the former Naponton Valley Farms, replaced by schools, athletic fields, single-family homes, about half of the Andine Pastures. Just to name a few examples, as a trail runner, having to travel to Dover to Knoneet Woods, Westwood to Hale Reservation, Walpo to Adams Farm, it greatly disappointed me, a lifelong resident, that there was no significant comparable land left in town. The tire trail legs help address this discrepancy, which is adjacent to this property. Our surrounding towns take pride in their natural resources, and now that I'm aware of ours, which I wasn't always, so do I. I'm hoping you too will soon be, especially as you see the Trails Committee, what the Trails Committee has been doing on this property. What Norwood might lack in terrain diversity compared to our neighbors, we make up with unrivaled river access for fishing, kayaking, boating, and birding and canoeing. The Naponton properties represent the last best remaining parcels suitable for access to Norwood's little-known natural resources. Resources that my kids' generation didn't have access to and future generations would. Many of you in this body have kids my age who haven't been able to take advantage of these properties. With the help of this property, we'll be able to, kids in the future will be able to take advantage of these properties. In regards to not now, or the sale right now is only because we're in trouble, that's not really the case. The sale now is because it's for sale now. We have the ability to buy this property now, we have had the foresight to buy this property in the past, so I think it's, it's a good idea to go ahead and do this. So in conclusion, I hope that town meeting members, residents, town officials will support the property acquisitions for the benefit of current residents and future generations. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Lynch, you'll be up next after Mr. Palmetier. I'm just going to ask, we still have some registered speakers. If a speaker has already said what you're going to say, think about passing, even though you're a registered speaker, to allow other, other voices to be heard. So just consider, we can, we can belabor the points, but we really are looking to, to add to the debate and not reiterate the same thing. So Mr. Palmetier, you're up.
Brian Palmetier, District 8, and I've already crossed off three paragraphs. All right. I want you to recall how our founders set aside land for the town common. It couldn't have been easy or cheap to give up a full commercial block. It couldn't have been easy or cheap to give up a full commercial block, but think of how therefore thought and investment left a lasting legacy and think of its role in our community. This purchase is our opportunity to leave a similar legacy to our descendants. As you know, this is the last farm in Norwood, the last area of vast open space that's in private hands. This is the last opportunity of its kind that will and it will not come again unless we vote to buy it tonight. That opportunity is gone. Do we really want more McMansions or do we want to invest in Norwood's quality of life? This property will leave local a local place for our children and grandchildren to enjoy, to help residents get away from the distractions of modern life, commune with nature, take stock of what really matters. With so many developments and other business enterprises creeping ever closer to residential areas, adding noise, bright lights, impervious payment, destroying foliage, and robbing residents of enjoyment of their properties, open green space is especially necessary. This purchase won't turn back time, but it will make a statement about the kind of town we want to be in the future. When I think of this land, I think of tranquility, peace, calm, renewal, family recreation. This property offers a wealth of possibility, and I think it's great. There's no plan, no definitive plan for its use. I've heard that mentioned as a as a as a drawback. We can set, we can have a special advisory committee study the options and come to us in the future with a proposal for how it might be used. I also think it's fitting that most of the cost of the acquisition could be paid for using money in a reserve fund derived from profits of another property that that we bought as a town to prevent a spurious development and that we were able to sell it at a hefty profit. These reserves can only be used for this kind of purchase, so the the money cannot be used to ease other budget woes. As you can see in the Yellow Pages in your FAQ, this acquisition has been included in the last three open space and recreation plans, with the first mention dating back more than two decades, 2003. We planned for this. Let's follow the plan. Let's do our founders proud. Let's do ourselves proud and leave this legacy to our descendants. I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Palmetier, Mr. Lynch. And after Mr. Lynch, can we get a mic over to Ms. Donahue over there? Mr. Lynch.
And Lynch, District Seven. A lot of my questions have been answered, but I think it's important to get the in perpetuity in there, that it's going to stay this way if it passes. If it does not pass, I have a motion here to take that funding and purchase the land of the Norwood Hospital, to have that available, perhaps negotiation with the MPT, and see if we can get that thing moving. I look at your emails and they're all finish the hospital. If this does not pass, I would suggest coming back, maybe maybe it's it's going to be there for a while, and then try to do something more with the hospital. It's amazing, your structural deficit, the hospital could generate money, jobs, it's just sitting there five years, you know, everybody out there working, but so it's just an option, thinking outside of the box here. So if it does not pass and you want to spend that 6 million, I think the property was assessed at approximately between 5 and 6 million, the land. So just a thought. Again, you're talking about structural deficits and so let the chips fall where they may. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Ms. Donahue and after Ms. Donahue, Alex, if you can get to a microphone?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Helen Donahue, District Six. As the Madam Moderator indicated, a lot of the same information has been repeated, and it's wonderful information, especially the cover job that Mr. Mizuka did. And you always think that I think about the past and you always think about, I'm very, very worried about spending town money, but I'm thinking of the future. I'm thinking of the importance of preserving some asset that we we may be able to get. We, there was some talk years ago about selling Mr. Pond. Thank goodness, it's not so great now for a water supply, but it will be in the future. This land is currently currently wonderful to help preserve the quality of the air in the town. And we need green space. We're losing green space. John Adams, who was a World War II Marine, I was with him once on a case, and he told the person involved in the case, see that Naponton River? That was the Route One for the Native Americans. This is our future. We've given up stuff in the past. We gave up this and used the money incorrectly. We have the money from the Forbes, a large part of it from the Forbes. That was a beautiful house, but it wasn't available to the public. This land will be available to all the public. This is our chance for our future people. We need school, yes, we need, we need health. And so please consider voting yes for this, fellow town meeting members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Alex and then Debbie Homewood.
Thank you. I'm Alex Jones. I'm in District Six. I am speaking on behalf of myself as a resident and a town meeting member, not on behalf of a town board or any department. I do hear from residents quite a bit when something upsetting is happening in town. But of all the controversies over the past five years that I've been serving the town that I've seen, the fervor I encountered in 2021 over protecting beavers at the airport may have been the most impassioned. I heard from PETA. I heard from someone who called herself a necromancer who lived in Quincy. And I heard from many Norwood residents who loved beavers and wanted to keep them in town. During the conceptual planning for the Bernie Cooper Park, I saw the same respect and appreciation for wildlife shining through from everyone who participated. It was important to our residents to make sure that the park would be beneficial, not just for the schoolchildren at the balch, for families, for wheelchair users, and all of the human neighbors. The park also needed to be good habitat for the deer, the birds, the squirrels, and other wildlife there. The Department of Fish and Game and the Nature Conservancy have developed a tool for the state to prioritize land for conservation, which is called BioMap. BioMap guides strategic protection of land and waters that are most important for conserving biological diversity in Massachusetts. It combines rare species and natural community records from mass wildlife with climate resiliency data from the Nature Conservancy and spatial data to identify intact fish and wildlife communities, habitats, and ecosystems that are the focus of the state Wildlife Action Plan. I want you all to know that in addition to being in Norwood's Open Space and Recreation Plan for the last two and a half decades, the Kofsky property is also identified on the Massachusetts BioMap as containing core habitat and critical natural landscape. Core habitat identifies areas critical for the long-term persistence of rare species, exemplary natural communities, and resilient ecosystems. Critical natural landscape identifies large landscapes that are minimally impacted by development and buffers to core habitats and coastal areas, both of which enhance connectivity and resilience. I encourage you to vote yes on this article for Norwood's human residents and also for our beaver residents to enjoy in perpetuity.
Ms. Homewood, and I'm guessing, Ms. Homewood, you're not going to say the same thing.
No, you already told me not to belabor it, so I won't belabor it. This is the long run. It is the long run.
And Ms. Homewood, you're going to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Debbie Homewood, District Three. And that's it. This is the long run. We don't get a second shot at it. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open it up. Ms. Quinn, you were the most enthusiastic about coming to the mic. Do you, I'm going to call on you first.
Derek Quinn, District Two. I wasn't in favor of this, but now I am. And I say that as the mother, I say that as someone who was born and bred here, raised my family here, and I'm the parent of a child with significant special needs that required an out-of-district placement. So I just want to point out, it is not renters that cause special education costs to go up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. All right, let me open it up. Yes, sir. And if you can get to a microphone, you can also stand by a microphone. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. You are doing the right thing. You will be next.
Hey, Alex De Silva, District Nine, and I just want to add to what people have said. I have lived in District Nine, right across from where this farm is, since I was a year old, partially thanks to the Massachusetts housing market. But throughout my life, I've watched green space in that area disappear bit by bit by bit, and it really is depressing as a kid watching forests, places where your friends would play, just go away. This is the last really big set of green space left in that area. So just adding my voice to the chorus, it is important that we preserve it.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
Hi, Cheryl Doyle. And last time I said I was District Seven, I'm not. I'm District Six, so I apologize for that. I was seven at one point in time. So I just want to say I'm really in favor of this because I remember way back when in Selectman Plasko, remember this, we were on the 1.5, and it was when all the 40Bs were doing this hostile takeover, wanting to build and build and build. We had no land, so we had to go through the housing stock and do it that way. Had we owned this property then, we wouldn't have had all the 40Bs. We would have had even more open space. So just on that note. Then on another note, I used to be on Concom for eight years. I remember walking this property when it was delineated and it needed a peer review to make sure that the delineation was correct. Our then conservation agent was out sick, so I got to walk it with an environmentalist. That is a beautiful piece of property. If we don't buy it now, the Kofskys are going to sell it to a developer, and there are developers that are already interested in it. That's why we were doing the peer review and delineating it back then because the Kofskys were setting up to sell it then. Once this property is sold, whether we buy it or somebody else buys it, we have no more land in this little itty-bitty town to buy that as open space. We will miss the chance to do this. So I encourage this body to please, please, please vote yes. And also to give District Nine some open space on their side because the rest of us, no matter what district we're in, we have open space. We get to enjoy it. So please be kind to another district. Please vote yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to go over to Ms. Churchill and then Mr. McClintock, and then we'll go back there. Ms. Churchill?
Rachel Churchill, District Five. I'm very much in support of this, and it seems like the confluence of a lot of planning from prior years and prior iterations of this body, specifically looking at this specific property. But a few technical questions that I had, Madam Moderator. Town Council had mentioned in response to a prior member's question whether we could do anything specifically about restricting the deed, and that's outside the scope of the warrant. But question, Madam Moderator, is that something that this body could do at a future properly-called meeting to identify that more specifically?
Mr. Duluga, do you want to take that? And Mr. McClintock, thank you.
Madam Moderator, members of town meeting, we worked long and hard on the motion language that it was to to provide the opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to purchase the property upon terms and conditions satisfactory to the Board of Selectmen. So there'll be more than enough opportunity for input with the Board of Selectmen. We've already bracketed, if you will, the the purchase for open space and for recreation purposes only. Beyond that, it's at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input for very specific conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Duluga. Is there a follow-up, Ms. Churchill?
Moderator, on the drafting of the motion, I do notice between Article Seven and Article Eight, the language is significantly different, and this starts with the
Well, we're not talking about Article Eight yet, so.
Yes, but as it relates to the drafting of Article Seven, Article Seven authorizes the sums from two specified sources appropriated for the purchase on terms and conditions determined by the Board of Selectmen. Though I do note Article Eight expressly authorizes the Board of Selectmen to acquire. So I'm just wondering why, from a drafting perspective, because I think we all know the intent of Article Seven, but I just question why the drafting of the motion is different because it, I'm expecting to have similar intent, other than, of course, the the finance appropriation in Article Eight, which is different.
I think Mr. Mizuka has that. I do know that one difference between the two is how we're financing. One includes borrowing, one doesn't. But Mr. Mizuka, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You are correct. The, any article that includes borrowing is explicitly drafted by our bond council to ensure that we can actually go out and borrow the money. I don't always agree with bond council, but if we don't follow their language, they won't actually go to the market and procure a bond for us. It's frustrating, but we just go with the language bond council recommends for any borrowing article.
Article Seven, there's no need to specifically have an express authorization of the Board of Selectmen. It's just the appropriation of funds upon terms and conditions to be determined by the Board of Selectmen, just from a drafting perspective for efficacy.
Correct.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you. Ms. McClintock? And and by the way, sir, thank you for dressing for town meeting.
You, Madam Moderator. So.
And you're going to tell us who you are, right?
Oh, Tom McClintock, District Two. So I'll keep this simple. I've been a scout leader in this town since 1987, a year after my wife and I moved here. And two weeks ago, took the scouts, we wanted to do map and compass. So we went to Medfield. This coming weekend, they're going camping in Framingham. This is a gem. And by the way, to the trail runner, years ago, I was training to to do the Down East Sunrise Trail, which is 103 miles up in Maine. There is a trail in Norwood. You can go to the Willett School, and if you run behind the dump and you go across Winter Street and go behind Father Max, it's all of maybe three quarters of a trial. This would absolutely add for trail running purposes. And this is an absolute gem that would absolutely increase the appeal of the town to outsiders to come into the town. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. All right, in the back by the microphone. Yep?
Hi, my name is Joe Sarno from District Four. So I'm actually just, I wanted to bring this up because at first, I'll be honest, when I came in, I was thinking, okay, do we really have the money like a lot of people are talking about? I forgot about the money we had from the Forbes and the fact that it has been earmarked for open space. This is open space. This is important to our town. I'm going to go back a little bit, and I could be not speaking right because I heard this from someone, but Bernie Cooper and I had conversations years ago, I'm friends with the family for a long time, about the land at Father, the land at St. Timothy's that we had a chance to purchase back in the 60s, that at the time, the town had a similar situation where we were like, we don't have the money. We can't buy it. We lost it to the Archdiocese, which is now the church, and we lost a huge valuable asset that could have been to our town to have land on on New Pond, which we don't have now. So I look at this as another opportunity 60 years later, well, 1960, so more than that, almost 60 years later, of having another opportunity to buy a beautiful chunk of land in our town, which there's very few pieces of left. There aren't any. I mean, I live on Shattuck Park. It's a tiny little park. It's nice, but it's small. That's all I have. I have a cemetery. I have that. You know, I'd like to have nice, big, open land that we could go and enjoy. And to speak to District Nine's piece or Precinct Nine, it's nice on that side. We forget about the other side of Route One. You know, they have an opportunity to have open space that they can get to that's easier than than come across the highway. So, you know, I, this piece of, this piece of money that we have to use, it's there to use for that purpose. I'm 100% for it now because of that, knowing that it really isn't money that we are taking out of thin air. We have it for that purpose. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sarno.
Thank you. it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Barrows?
Good evening again. Carrie Barrows, District Eight. I just have a couple clarifying questions from something that the lawyer said and some wording on the board. It says, "Upon such terms and conditions to be determined by the Board of Selectmen." So I just would like to clarify how much of a role Town Meeting will have in certain decisions, specifically around, one, determining what ultimately ends up happening with the land. Will it come back to Town Meeting for a vote if you decide to sell the houses on the Ernie's property?
We're not talking about Ernie's property.
Oh, we're not there yet. Okay. So how many of these decisions will actually end up coming back to Town Meeting to make the final decision, and how much will be made exclusively by the Selectmen, knowing that there will be future other Selectmen coming into play in the next five to seven years?
Mr. Mizuka, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I threw you to the body. So any future sale of the land, so let's say there was a parcel that we wanted to sell, consistent with Article Seven, we're still in the same article, that has to come back to Town Meeting. Any change in the use of the land would come back to Town Meeting. Any appropriation to do anything on the land would come back to Town Meeting. That's such terms and conditions as the Selectmen may determine. That's really about sequencing the closing and picking the timing. Any regulations they would put on parkland are consistent with what the board does for regulations for the Town Common for things like that. The Charter and the bylaws delegate that to the Selectmen. But that would be like, you know, do we have events there after 10 o'clock? And do we, you know, how many trash barrels do we have, and things like that? But any major decisions, funding projects, funding uses, if there were to be a sale, that all has to come back through Town Meeting.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs?
Joan Jacobs, excuse me, District One. Move the question, please.
And Ms. Stavchuk has seconded, so the question has been moved. Again, this requires a two-thirds majority. And I'm opening the voting for moving the question. 10 seconds. Close the vote. All right, and that passes 163 to 7. That takes us back to the main motion, that the sum of $6,176,677.36 be transferred from receipts reserved for the appropriate sale of real estate, and $1,077,176.4 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to purchase open space and recreation purposes, upon such terms and conditions to be determined by the Board of Selectmen. And this is for a parcel of land located at 820 Napontet Street. This takes a two-thirds majority, because it's a real estate purchase. All right? Two-thirds majority on this. And the voting is open. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. 155 to 12, motion passes. All right, that takes us to Article Eight. Ms. Sullivan?
Moved to indefinite postponement.
And Mr. Fleming, you're seconding that, correct? Okay, this is for the purchase of 814 and 816 Napontet Street. I understand the Board of Selectmen have a motion to amend. Ms. Grow?
That is correct, Madam Moderator. This is a motion to amend, moved by the Board of Selectmen, to amend FinCom's main motion of indefinite postponement, with that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain easement rights, gift, or otherwise, two parcels of real estate located at 814 Napontet Street and 816 Napontet Street for open space and recreation purposes, upon such terms and conditions to be determined by the Board of Selectmen, that the sum of $1,500,000 is appropriated to pay all costs associated with such acquisition, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $1,500,000 under and pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of town thereafter.
And Mr. Plasko, you're seconding. Ms. Sullivan, I apologize. I did not give you a chance to speak on the original motion, on the FinCom's motion. Can you go ahead on that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Commission voted 3 to 2 against the original motion. As a Finance Commission, we recognize that this is a unique... The Finance Commission recognized that this was a unique opportunity to purchase additional open space, but we feel that we have fulfilled the wishes of a previous Town Meeting by purchasing the cost 22 acres of the Kofsky land. For many of the reasons that we have stated prior in this evening, we are facing a structural deficit. We have been, we are using free cash, and we believe it should be used strategically and carefully. While this is close to the, while it does provide opportunities for perhaps parking, and we may sell the properties, the FinCom didn't feel there was a definitive enough plan for this property, as there was for the Kofsky land. And so we, as a, we voted 3 to 2 against this article. In addition, it would put $92,000 additional pressure on our debt service. So that's another $92,000 to our operating budget for the next 30 years.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And Ms. Grow, anything on the, I know that Mr. Mizuka spoke on it, but anything further on your amendment?
I would echo the same comment from FinCom, that it was a unique opportunity. And when it comes to land, they don't come back around twice now. And so if we're going to choose to do it, now is the time. And we wanted to give the body the opportunity to have that decision.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Grow. All right, we have several registered speakers. Mr. Greeley, I have you first. Mr. McFarland, second. So, Mr. Greeley, if you can get to a microphone, and then Mr. McFarland, and after that will be Mr. Kenechi.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm still Joe Greeley, District Six. Just a couple of points on this article. There is a saying that the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. And if you can't do that, then today is the day to do it. This isn't, I had mentioned before, a feeding frenzy. This property, these two parcels, they, not only are they, I will admit that they're nice to have, but it goes well beyond that. There would certainly be a benefit to buying, purchasing these two properties. Number one is access. Number two is safety in that access to the greater property. The second benefit of this, in my mind, is the controls and the intended controls that will come thereafter. I'm going to, if I could, Madam Moderator, I'm just going to read a small passage. "The committee shall," and this, just bear with me for one second, this is not about the Kofsky, Pachakowski, lot of land, lots of land. "The committee shall consist of seven members. The committee will be responsible for overseeing the use and maintenance of the property. It will recommend to the Selectmen and Town Meeting action related as appropriate. It will be responsible for raising and dispersing supplemental funds, et cetera. The committee will report to the Selectmen as required and to the annual Town Meeting in the form of a report on an annual basis by the time the annual Town Meeting takes effect." This is actually a paragraph from the Adams Farm Purchase. It's a committee appointed to study potential uses for land in North Walpole, June 1999, and April 2000. At the time, it was identified as the North Walpole Land Study Committee. And I know we're Norwood, and we're not Walpole, but I think we have a good blueprint as far as the right path to take going forward. The article that's in front of us right now is for the purchase of land. And as was indicated by Mr. Mizuka, and echoed by the Finance Commission, there are certainly benefits that you could take, steps that you could take immediately, that would provide relief from the $1.5 million acquisition price, to it, the sale, the identification, the probable passing of the parcel, to basically split off one of the two houses and sell that house. And in my mind, this is all my opinion, tear down the second house and provide access to the rest of the property in that manner. That's, nobody asked me about that, but to me, that would be the best use of these two parcels. I think in that way, we would acquire the land before someone else does, and that's imminent. And number two, go into this with a vision of how do we pay back Town Meeting, and how do we pay back the budget in the right manner? I think there are steps that Walpole has already taken at Adams Farm, and I think as long as we follow in that path, I think that's the right way to go. The other thing, I'll just tell you, I'm going to use that word trails again, but building trails is nice. But building trails that create access so that people can enjoy and observe Mother Nature, that's the goal. And I think this, yes, we've already, thank you very much for the prior article, we've already, you know, surpassed everybody's, certainly anybody on the Trails Commission's Christmas wish list, but this, these two parcels, 814 and 816, I think they would augment and supplement and complement the rest of the Kofsky property. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McFarland, and then Mr. Kenechi. And then I'm also going to say, the energy is kind of leaving the room, folks. Wish people would stay for this, but also be very mindful, let's not just repeat the same thing over and over again. Mr. McFarland?
Peter McFarland, District Four, and also a member of the Norwood Sustainability Commission. So I've been involved in plenty of discussions about open space and housing. I'm in favor of purchasing both 814 and 816 Napontet Street along with the Kofsky farm. Now, the Town Meeting has voted to purchase the Kofsky farm, 814 and 816 Napontet, provide better access to the farm by increasing the frontage and getting the entrance away from the highway ramp. These properties... Visibility is limited, and the speed of approaching vehicles makes it a dangerous adventure. These properties make a better front door and make it to the farm, and make it safer to enter and exit. Plus, there is no better time to buy real estate, except when the owner is willing to sell. We did this with the Saints Lot and the Forbes Hill property. Do we have a plan to what to do with the properties? No, not really. But as with the Forbes Hill, we didn't even know how we were going to pay for it. We bought the properties, put together a committee to formulate a plan to handle it, and that's what we need to do with the Napontet Street properties. We hope you support and purchase 814 and 816 Napontet.
Thank you, Mr. Kenechi.
Go on, Mr. Sir.
Okay. Ms. Makowitz? Mr. Barrett? After Mr. Barrett, I have Mr. Palmetier.
Okay, this will be a lot quicker. In my heart, in my heart of hearts, I believe that the longtime owners of the Napontet Street properties have a generational love and appreciation for the property's wilderness value. And without that, these last remaining vestiges of land wouldn't even be available for us to acquire. I think that's important to note. I'm also, therefore, I'm really grateful for the landowners, for their willingness to provide us the opportunity to even purchase these. And the last point I want to make is, I love FinCom. I've made that clear to many of them. But it was a 3 to 2 vote. So this was not an easy decision for them to vote it down. So I want you to factor that in when you think about purchasing this additional property. Thanks.
Mr. Palmetier? And then Mr. Lynch?
Ryan Palmetier, District Eight. Crossed off most of what I was going to say, but I want to tell you a real quick story. Back when I was a Cub Scout leader and wanted to explore the Kofsky farm as a potential outing for the Cub Scout pack, I remember going and preparing to make that left turn, coming from the rotary, heading toward I-95. And I didn't feel like I dared make it. I went and I did the three loops around the Culverleaf to come back, to come back, so that I could make the right turn into that lot. The advantage of buying the Kofsky property, or excuse me, the Pachakowski, the two other properties there, is that that entrance can be further away from that exit there for safer access. And this, one of the other things I was thinking about is, the back halves of those, that property, the back, probably three quarters of those properties, can be easily added to the Kofsky farm as open space. We get a right-of-way that accesses it back there. We put whatever parking we need to make a, you know, trailhead there to access the Kofsky property. And those two homes up front could stay, I think. Somebody talked about maybe needing to tear one down or whatever. But, you know, that doesn't have to be taken out of our residential stock. So that's one option that this special committee could consider, in terms of getting some of that money back on the purchase of the property. And we get the fallow property behind it to add to the Kofsky farm open space.
Thank you, Mr. Palmetier. And Mr. Lynch? Mr. Lynch is passing. Can we get a mic over to Ms. Donahue?
Helen Donahue, District Six. The property that we just voted to purchase is at the entrance of the town. You come into Norwood on Napontet Street, and there you are. And what Mr. Palmetier said about the access to the property is very important. Also, under the Town of Norwood zoning bylaw, each of those houses are required to have 90 feet of frontage. It's in an S1 district. They have the frontage that's required. They have more than the frontage. Each of those houses have more than the area. That's good for the houses, however. That also means that if it was sold to someone else, they could construct additions on those houses. They call them nowadays apartments for the grandparents, whatever that, but at any rate, so we need parking area. We need a few spaces, like up on Nickel Street, a neat little parking area for uses of the property. And rather than infringe on the open part of the property, that may be a potential use. So that, we had a good appraisal. And for two houses in Norwood, for that amount of money, is a deal. So please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Okay, that's it for registered speakers. So do I see anybody else? Yes, sir, all the way in the back. Can you get to a microphone, please?
Hi, Douglas Bean. I live at 48 Heather Drive, and I've lived here for about 10 years. Very excited about the acquisition of the Kofsky property. I live right near the Meadow Street area, and I go hiking there just about every day. And there's really not a whole lot of parking for a lot of the hiking areas that we do have. So I think adding this extra area would give more people access than people that are just right next to the property, where anybody in the town or a neighboring town can come and enjoy it. I used to go to hiking areas in other neighboring towns, and now I'm able to stay in... to stay in Norwood because we're expanding all the trail networks that we have here. So, thank you for that. And I just want to say that I hope we do vote for adding as many, many open space properties as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Garrity?
Jim Garrity, District One. Can we move the question?
All right. Mr. Garrity moved the question, and Mr. Connolly seconded. This is not debatable. Again, it's a two-thirds majority to move the question, which means we will then vote on the amendment. All right. To move the question, the voting is now open. All right. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. All right. 146 to 5. The question has been moved. That takes us to the amendment. So, this is the Board of Selectmen's amendment, which is to acquire 814 and 816 Napontet Street for open space and recreation purposes. This takes a majority vote on the amendment. Just so everybody is clear, voting on the amendment, if the amendment passes, and it only takes a majority vote on the amendment, it then becomes the main motion. The main motion takes a two-thirds majority. Okay? Everybody very clear on that? And Attorney DeLuca is shaking his head as I'm saying it. So, again, right now, you're just voting on making, on approving the amendment, which will then become the main motion. And the amendment was made by the Board of Selectmen to actually acquire 814 and 816 Napontet Street. 10 seconds. Let's close the vote. All right. To the amendment passes, 125 to 27. That now becomes the main motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to put it to a vote as soon as we get this set. And again, because this involves the purchase of real estate, for it to pass, it will take a two-thirds majority. All right. So, this is the purchase of 814 and 816 Napontet Street. The voting is now open. 124 to 27. That is a two-thirds majority. Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, I do not think that we can finish with a $16 million capital plan ahead of us. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn until Monday. Mr. Connolly?
Go, Madam Moderator, today, it's time to say, "Got the plate."
All right. So, we're adjourning, motion to adjourn until Monday at 6:30. Ms. Neil Rizzo, are you seconding that?
Yes, it's telling people she'd like to take a break, treat her on the way out. Please do.
All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
See you on Monday, everybody.